Okay.
Dial up.
All right. I am going to call the town council work session for Tuesday, March 28th, 2023. To set to order, it is 3:00 PM. And we're going to start with planning commission decisions. No.
You're supposed to look at me and see.
Do you want to?
Have anything to say?
No.
All right then, moving on to legislative review. Plastics reduction ordinance.
Great. Air pretend members of council, good afternoon. This is the second reading. Of the ordinance to reduce single use plastics, including plastic water bottles. You can see in the memo, it's the same outline as what has been. In the ordinance since first reading, there are no changes, except to note that we did add the. The authority to create rules and regulations administratively, just so that as we refine the definitions and the implementation of this moving forward, we can. Maintain rules at the staff level to to help implement this. So with that, there are no further changes to any of the content. I do understand that the mayor had a question about a definition related to farmer's market.
Yeah, so in the ordinance, farmers markets and artisan crafters, I think.
Or.
Artisans. Are noted as local. And that is not how it's not defined in the state statute that way and. Was we probably don't have a lot of local farmers. And so do we really want to be that restrictive with that? Definition.
It's not in there intentionally as for any particular reason, so. We don't have any objection with.
If you agree to take it out, we'll revise it for tonight.
I mean, that's great. I think we should revise it just so it's clear.
Yeah. Hey, um. I understand Frisco is doing similar. It it how do our. Ordinances compare or contrast?
Frisco has not drafted an ordinance yet. They've just had the the discussion in general. It was under the same. Used here and that is, you know, the state bill, House Bill 1162. And the the state's plastic bag ban. I think the conversation. In Frisco is still several weeks, if not months out from any decision. They are focused also on single use water bottles, so it's a very similar discussion. I think the one thing that perhaps might be the biggest difference is that Frisco is. Looking to speed up that timeline a little bit. But I also think, given where they are in the decision making process, that that timeline might not actually be all that much faster.
Yeah.
And and the timeline I'm referring to is that July 1st, 2024 timeline.
Um, I mean, if you know anyone on on that council, it'd be good if uh.
I'm assuming they're stealing it from us.
They, I think, well, imitation is the sincerest form of flattery. Yeah, it'd be nice if it's our bills are similar enough so we don't confuse the public. You know what I mean? Like you're over the border and it's one way and this back to the north, it's another. So whatever.
I will relay that information at the next discussion.
So how can you, how can that process be sped up if July 1st? July 1st, 2024 is the first date via the state. Regulations. Do we have that option to make it happen quicker?
The state law as written does not allow us to implement any sort of ban on plastics like that until July 1. I transpose January and July, but I think it's July 1, 2024. And I do think that aside from the legality issue that we've already raised, we also have sponsors who have reached out. And they're gonna, if we're not tracking with the state law, I don't think that's going to be good for anybody. So, no, I don't think so.
Cool.
Good luck.
No, actually, surprisingly, it's other other folks.
Um, Jesse, since we have one more round table, um, and this is possible to pass second reading. I'm wondering, will we have a different focus on the round table, maybe reviewing this, but really focusing on what's the community's input on all plastic beverage bottles?
Yeah, exactly. So it's it's the all the all plastic beverage container question. And I think the other piece and why we really wanted to make sure we had the rules and regs provision in here. Is we've been asked to further define drinking water, like, does it include vitamin water and color, you know? All of these different crazy products for water. So we felt like we can interpret this pretty clearly. It's drinking water in a plastic bottle. But there's just been enough. Feedback that we feel like revising that definition. The other piece is around the the definition of container specifically, so it's all food containers and it's really broad. And so I think that that's another piece to the round table discussion that we want to talk about with the public.
Great, thank you.
Thank God you arrived.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Jesse.
All right. Sorry for my tardiness. I was on a cast call with. We're calling the cast 15, the 15 rural resort communities that have been called out in the new land use legislation and trying to draft a. Statement piece to pass on to the drafters as they work on amendments, so. I was doing the Lord's work. That's what I was doing it right here.
Yeah.
All right, Stables Development Contract for First Reading.
And council, in your packet is the working draft for the Stables Development Agreement. Some of the legal jargon may change in the second iteration, but all the deal points will stay the same. Per council's feedback during the last work session, we updated four key points. Including the developers financing and that's a max or a minimum fee of 5%. And a maximum fee of 7%. We increased the appreciation cap from 2% to 3%. And decrease the real estate commission from 2% to 1%. And then we will also be instituting a GMP for the infrastructure costs. We will have that closer to when we have final approvals for the plans. And we believe we're ready for first reading and looking forward any comments or questions.
Thank you. Questions?
I.
What's the GNP?
Guaranteed maximum price.
Did you guys already work up the number of AMI or number of units at each AMI? Do you already have that information?
Yes, we do need to get to the final final budget numbers in terms of the GMP in order to. Fine tune those, the goal would be decreasing, not increasing the AMI levels for the units.
Yeah, that'd be great. I think that's just something we'd like to know sooner rather than later, so that we don't end up with. A bunch of 140 to make everything pencil, you know?
Right.
And I know you guys are aware of that, but I just wanted to go say that in public. And then on page four. The sand district, do we have the first right of refusal on their units or are they just normal like? If they sell, they just go into the lottery.
We have not ironed out the details on that restrictive covenant, but that's something that we can look at.
I guess if they're all going into lottery, maybe it doesn't matter.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Right.
Yeah. Sorry.
Never mind.
Never mind. As Jeffrey said.
Other questions?
I do like that um, the town homes with the lower AMI are the only ones that are income restricted. So, yeah, that's good.
I don't know if this is something that belongs where we talk about the housing in a little bit, but. I just saw what appeared to, and I'm sure just to me, but appeared to be discrepancies on the developer fee. At some points, it says minimum of three and a half to six and a half, other places says five to seven. And I just, I guess I don't. And then on the the language on this. In the summary, it says project risks currently estimated through two developer charge a maximum of 5% fee on all hard and soft. Soft costs with a maximum fee of 7%. And I guess I'm just, I'm having a hard time reading all that and trying to figure out where we're at. Where we're bracketing and what conditions would dictate what?
So that should say a ma- a minimum fee of 5% with a maximum fee of 7%. The three and a half is from some of the old iterations that we've been working through. So what would constitute getting up to seven would be, it's more of an incentive. So if we see some savings on the project. Or additional revenue depending on the final price points. We would then see our subsidy lowered, which would allow the developer to collect that extra 2%. So it would have to be our subsidy would lower, they would also be a split in that sense.
That makes total sense. And I guess not being in this world, do we have any desire or even legal? Re appetite to look at the kind, the builder contract with Thrive and to see how that is working together? With the developer or is that not our purview whatsoever?
Um, it's a great question. We we have talked a lot about that. That's one of the reasons that we're still kind of massaging some of the language, so. We do need to make sure that because although very unlikely when construction has problems, there's a lot of. Issues around causation, was it the design or was it the construction? So we are working exactly on that. And also just want to say that we will make sure that the fee language is consistent throughout. That is another thing. You're picking up on the things that we're still trying to clean up and clarify.
Understood. Thank you.
Very close read.
Job, Jay.
And we worked together on it.
Other questions? Final comments? This is first reading this evening.
I'm okay.
Everybody good?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice work.
Thanks.
Master Plan Ordinance. Open space. Adoption, first reading.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As we discussed at our last meeting, we are hoping to bring forward our open space and trails master plan. For first reading today, and this plan builds on the 2007 open space plan and the 2009 trails plan. And this has been about two years in the making, as you know, and. The intent of it really was to create a high level plan that identified some goals. And tools and really provided us with that decision making framework to be able to vet projects. And the idea at the time was that we would develop these trails and signage work plans, which we brought to you at the last meeting. Which is really the implementation measures and how to actually implement the master plan. With the idea that that's the opportunity for us to get very prescriptive. And hopefully adaptable and flexible as priorities change, as projects are finished, we can add to that list, we can take things off. And then that would then flow into our annual work plan. And so BOSAC is in support of adopting the master plan and we are happy to answer any questions or address any concerns you might have.
Okay, questions?
So there's going to be more the the tables that we had last week, that's not the trail plan. Those are just the ideas that are going to be the. Under.
Those are what we're calling the trails work plan and a signage work plan and BOSAC is working through those and. It's it's the implementation of the master plan. So we had these kind of big overarching goals. And so what does that really mean on the ground? What projects do we want to tackle? What does signage look like? We talked a lot about. Kind of the hodgepodge and cleanup and wayfinding and dressing a lot of those and that level of detail we imagine to be in the signage work plan. And then the trails work plan is an opportunity to identify maybe some of those missing connections, some specific trail corridors. Those types of either specific projects and philosophies with the idea that that can be a living document that changes over time. Our fear was that with the 2009 trails plan that we had, it got outdated very, very quickly because we were. Doing all these great things and building a lot of those trails. So. With the idea of a work plan, we can be flexible and change those priorities as things are finished. Or we acquire new properties and have new opportunities to create connections as well.
So. To Kelly's point. In the in the body of the ordinance itself, it's a bill for an ordinance approving the open space trails and master plan. There's really no trails master plan. There, I mean, in this, in this thing is a open space master plan, but there's no trails master plan. And here you presented us with some stuff last week that's not. I'm a little confused because this that the consultant did is not a trails master plan at all. And I don't want to even refer to this as a trails master plan. I'm okay with this being the master plan, but not a trails master plan.
Okay, so what I, what we recall from this original discussion on this was that we were, we were instructed to merge the two plans that we had again, an 07. Open space plan and 09 trails plan. That this whole effort was intended to make them into one plan. So that was the intent.
But one of our gripes was that there was no trails plan in here. Through this whole thing, which is why then the the. BOSAC went off and did the stuff that we were presented with last week, but that's not even, that's not part of this.
It's sort of nests underneath it. It's part of, you know, there's the plan approved. You know, as as Ann said, so that so the overall open space and trails master plan has decision matrices for both open space and trails. And then the specifics with regard to what we in the past have referred to as a. Trails master plan was really focused in the work plan itself, so that you could have that and. You know, like she discussed tweaked tweaked as you say, oh, well, we acquired a new piece of property. We need to add this in there or this one's been built so we can move it out. And so that the overall, the overall master plan kind of advises us going forward, but the work plan is really where the. You know, the list of tasks or the list of work. Approaches will will live.
So I I don't have, I mean, I don't want to get too far off topic here because I don't have a problem with what BOSAC has suggested we adopt. For the master plan, open space and trails master plan. What I didn't realize is the work plan that you guys presented two weeks ago. I just, it that seems like a foundational document for developing a trails work plan because it really doesn't have specifics. I mean. It talks about. Connectivity and proximity and accessibility and community benefits and sustainability, but. It doesn't talk about specific areas or I think it's too, I think we need like another.
Well, another, another. And and that was the the first draft and we wanted to come to you at the last meeting to make sure we were on the right track. These work plans have not been flushed out yet. I know BOSAC is going to take a deep dive at their April meeting. To really get into that level of detail. We were just trying to see how do these fit in with some of the strategic goals of of the master plan? Are we on the right track and developing these before we go down the road of of starting to identify all those specific connections?
Okay, because I I just, I know with our trailhead discussion today that. As a council, we're still struggling to know. I mean, that's still just to me seems like three random trailheads that have come to us now. It doesn't seem like. There's, I mean, it was a really nice documentation in our packet and I agreed with, you know, how you. You guys gave us a lot of great information, but I still don't know how you arrived at those three being the ones that we need to address immediately. When we have an entire, you know, system. And so I still think that there needs to be someplace where we identify the priorities. That the, you know, the priority parking areas, the priority signage areas, the. Priority next priority trails. I mean, that's why I brought up Alta Verde. I still think we need to. Look at all the trails we have and determine, are we doing more trails or? Are we maintaining trails? I mean, I just feel like BOSAC really needs to give us more. Direction. Okay.
Well said. Other questions? Comments? All right, this is on for first reading. Carol, did you have some?
No.
I thought you grow- grounded me.
Jeffrey.
See, you're stunning. It sounds like Carol.
Yeah, well.
And intelligent.
Really does. All right. Okay, yeah.
Um, one thing we wanted to mention, there were a couple of typos and some language changes we wanted to make to the ordinance and we've done that. So we can supply you with a revised copy for the night meeting, but it substantively doesn't change.
Great, thank you.
I'm sorry to get us. Realized that that was the actual. I thought those were in this line.
Oh, hello.
Public projects update, this must be.
Yes.
Correct. Sorry, we didn't wait for our announcement.
That's okay, I'm.
Sharon doesn't wait.
I've been running all day, nonstop. Have added fiber 96.
Yeah, so just a quick update here. You saw we had some good construction in 2022 and. Looking forward to a bunch of projects in 2023, hopefully Ski Hill Road up to the Peak 7 fire station. And then also connecting some workforce housing at the Loge and then hopefully getting to the ice rink. So. That's our big project. We'll also have drops and looking to wire some MDUs and other businesses. So. If you know anyone, please have them sign up on the ALO website.
Awesome. Great, great job. Things seem to be moving the way they should now.
We're hoping, yeah.
I got a question on process, like say there's a neighborhood that would like, oh, I'll tell you the corkscrew.
Who's the point?
Oh, no. You should see the the downloads I have. Like say corkscrew flats are asking me, when are we going to get?
Right.
And how do, how do they? Kind of make that happen? How do they kind of?
No, it's.
Light a fire on.
Good question. So getting across Wellington into corkscrew is going to be expensive and the houses over there are really far apart. So. Honestly, we're aiming for the more high density neighborhoods where we can get more people wired.
Could someone like that, a neighborhood, the kind of upscale like that, underwrite the cost if they want?
Yeah, ALO does have a program and I'm trying to remember, I think it's. I forget the exact name of their program, but where, you know, the neighbors can all get together and say, hey, we'll pay 50% of the infrastructure costs. And then maybe have an increased monthly cost and just in order to get them fiber service.
So they get, they can access that information from the ALO website.
You know, I'm not sure that it's on the ALO website, but if you want to direct them to me, I can help them out.
Okay, yeah.
Going up. Riling Road.
Yeah.
So it doesn't have to cross Wellington. It could go. It could go through the clubhouse area directly to the corkscrew.
Yep.
Loop around, it should just go right through, right?
The river goes the other side.
Go over the river. I'm sure they could just run a cable under the bridge. I'll do it for you.
Do you have what the ballpark, the, I mean, what kind of number are we talking for these neighborhoods?
So. Construction costs are about $200 per foot to get it in the ground. That's the conduit. And then running the actual fiber and then constructing the drop to the house. Each drop is about 700 to $1,000. So.
So it's a big number.
It is.
What's our contract with ALO? How long does that extend to?
It's a 10 year contract and we have about seven years left.
Okay.
Also a renewing factor in there, so I think it.
Have. I mean, actually, I'm, I'm, I couldn't be happier with them, but it's just my own personal experience because I tell them who I am. But yeah, I I think that's great. Hopefully we can keep them around for a while, you know, so.
Are they doing better with subscriptions?
Yeah, so they added 149 customers in 2022. Right now they're showing 578 customers in the town of Breck.
Great.
So we're hoping to keep adding more.
Good.
Yeah.
It's been. Hammering them.
Trying.
The staff, our staff.
Nice work.
Any, yep, go ahead.
That was my question.
Okay. We're good on fiber?
Yeah, I do love the thing about the pool, though, that made me chuckle.
Getting rid of the wifi at the pool. Great.
It's because of her.
I think it probably was. No, actually, I don't.
Well, you had your older child looking after your younger, right?
No. My kids cannot be trusted. I do watch my children.
Do we have any other wifi questions? We do have Chris present. Is there any specific question that's? Continue. Okay, for the other public projects, I don't have. Anything to add to what's in the packet other than Excel did demob all of their tanks out of the LNG yard off of coin. The fence will be in place and then the tanks will come back again this fall and I'll let you know a date on that once I hear back from Excel.
Did they ever use them?
I know that at least one time, maybe two times initiated it.
Don't blame me, I get my thermostat at 55.
Like the coldest winter on record.
I thought it was 30 below either.
Initiate it a little bit earlier than 30 below.
Yeah.
All right, cool.
And any other questions?
Are we? Are we on schedule with the dam? Is that gonna? Just be done when we next fall?
We're on schedule to complete this year. Yes.
Next fall, right?
Confuses me, but fall 2023. Right?
2023 right now. What time is it?
It's not fall.
It's the end of winter. We still have two.
2023 is our.
Yeah, that's the next fall. This fall, yeah. Oh, I get you. I see. I see the problem.
Questions? For staff?
Everybody good?
Nice job. All right. Mobility. Mobility and the quandary plan.
Oh, goodie.
Here's about the quandary plan. Matt, hi Teddy.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We have a quick video summarizing the mayor's challenge that was a pretty good success this winter and. Starring somebody we all know.
Watching myself on TV, just so you know.
It's gonna get awkward.
This is when we need the projector coming out of the ground.
Yeah.
Like right in front, yeah.
Hey, everyone. It's Eric Manuel, the mayor of Breckenridge, and I'm just here to thank everybody that participated at our mayor's challenge this winter. Pretty successful. We had about 60 some people participate. Most of you took the bus. About 25% of you either walked or rode your bike, a bunch of car pooled and a really hardy 3% skied to work, which is pretty darn cool. So. Thank you all for participating. It's what we can do to get out of our cars at least one day a week, help the sustainability effort, help Breckenridge move to a carbon free future. Look for other programs coming this summer. We have an e-bike program, we have an e-car share program. And we're developing a potentially an app to help with our mayor's challenge to really blow it up more in the summer where it's a little easier for all of you to. Not take your car at least one day a week. And when we're not doing something, still think about it. Getting out of your car one day a week helps the planet. And it's good for you. Get to walk around and see some stuff you don't normally. So thanks again to all of you that participated. And I hope to get more of you involved this summer.
It was well done. It was super cold and I had trouble talking.
Car share program.
What's car share program?
What are you driving?
The, leave the keys on your front porch and we'll.
I'm ready to share.
Giving you some more updates about that, but we are participating in a program with Excel Energy. Where they are basically paying for us to install EV chargers that we'll get to keep. In return for a one year car EV car share pilot. And they're partnering with Colorado Car Shares, a nonprofit that operates car share between Boulder and Denver. And now through this program, they're expanding into more rural areas. But there will be two EV. Car share vehicles at the South Gondola Garage that will be available for anyone to check out and use.
Yeah.
That, yeah, they have to sign up for a membership. That, yeah, they have to sign up for a membership. You have to have a two-year clean driving record in order to um. Get into the program and then they send you a fob that allows you to access the vehicles.
We learned from our last car share program that we're implementing with this to give it the best chance of success.
Yeah, we're, the location's different. Like, one of the locations was over at the Public Works Campus and I think people had trouble accessing it over there. And then part of this program through Excel is they're really trying to market it to um, housing developments. Um, and so we're gonna work with the Housing Department on trying to do some marketing. Um, and pushing it out to people that are in our deed restricted properties around town.
Cool. I bet it'll do better.
Yeah, we're gonna try.
Nice.
Um, were there any other questions around the mayor's challenge while we're on that topic? You know, that's jumping ahead, but.
That was well done. That was, that was good program. I think we should.
Did participation trend up as the weeks went on?
Uh, it kind of trended the other, I think when it was new and all the flyers popped up, everyone, I think the December month had the highest. Participation and then I think I kind of got. Uh, people got used to it and, yeah, but um, we are gonna be working on an app. Uh, and we're starting conversations with different technology platforms to find out some kind of solution that can help gamify it a little bit and. Give us a little bit more metrics in terms of mileage and how often people did this.
They use an app in Salida and they gamified it and it's a huge success. Like people fight over, you know, who's the, who's the commuter? So that's what we want. We want something similar where people get super into it and, you know, either log it or. I don't know, the, they're, they're working on a bunch of things, so it'll be cool.
Yeah.
Nobody's competitive. I don't know.
Yeah. Counsel's trophy. Best commuter.
Right, um, with that, we can run back to the parking uh, topic for mobility. Uh, with that note in there, uh, on Free After Three, we're gonna wait to make any changes until May one, when we go to free parking. Uh, in all town lots. Um, we just don't want to make any changes right at the moment, so uh, we're gonna wait for that. Um, Locals Appreciation Month, May, the month of May, in all of our town lots. And then we're still working on what the plan will be for. Uh, as we work into June and with Epic Discovery and all that opening, so um, more to come on that. And any other mobility questions today?
Just on these traffic counts, I mean, anecdotally, when it says the Blue River Trail counts were down compared to months' counts in the previous two years. I mean, geez, I mean, Saturday and Fri- Saturday and Sunday, there's, there's uh, lines heading from, heading north, you know, from Blue River down. All the way past the town, almost to the base of Hoosier. I mean, how, how confident we are, uh, we with the accuracy of these uh, these numbers?
I don't know that we could give a, a percentage of how accurate it probably is. It's probably not accurate enough to, to say that is exactly correct.
Yeah, okay.
Jeffrey, could you clarify? Are you thinking it should be more than?
Yeah, well, it said it's down this year. Last two years.
The one out at Blue River Town Hall.
Yeah, the old one-way one.
From, from, heading from the south to uh, to town.
The one by.
The new number, the correct number is the ninety-seven hundred for February.
Yeah, and that's, that's the one at River Park, which is a two-way counter, so.
So likely that the counts that were at Highway Nine and Blue River Town Hall, that was a. It wasn't a um, reliable counter and so.
Okay, all right.
So we're seeing higher numbers. We just, until we get like to April where we're comparing the same counter, then we'll be able to see and. And sort of track better.
That's a much bigger number.
Yeah, it is. Yeah.
Uh, counter will actually be very reliable, so they, they believe it'll be ninety-nine percent or better, so. Um, okay, great. Anything else with ability there?
It's not Quandary.
Yeah, um, Quandary, I guess.
I'll ask one more question. How are the dogs doing on a, on a bus? Is any people loving it?
Everybody's loving it. We haven't had any issues. The only issues we have are with humans, so um, the dogs, the dogs are great.
Okay, surprise there.
A truer statement.
That's great, right?
You, you mentioned that you guys discussed Free After Three starting immediately and that was in the cards. Is that due to our contract with BSR?
Uh, it's part of the agreement. Uh, we just want to make sure we're on the same page, so um, they just didn't want to make any changes and I think we kind of agree with. It could just be confusing right now.
Yeah.
But Matt, for next winter, are we going to try to do the three after free all the way through?
Yes, uh, we'll, we'll come up with a plan and, and make some recommendations, so.
Okay.
Um, I would expect that's part of the part that's on the table.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, Quandary.
Yep, so Quandary Park, uh, Shannon, Ann and myself uh, sat in on the meeting today with the BOCC and they selected someone. And um, more or less, there's not a whole lot in your packet. Um, I'd be happy to answer questions or if Shannon has any information she wants to relay to you, we can. Do that.
Um, so I guess I'll just sort of try to put the, it into context for anybody that hasn't known about this, but. For the past couple of years, the county's been working to try to reduce amount of traffic parked on the county roads up at Quandary. Um, it was a safety issue. There were all kinds of problems. People parking in people's yards and all, all kinds of stuff. Um, we haven't really been involved the first two years with the exception of the fact that we did try to give some um. Guidance on the parking side of things and we, on behalf of the county, entered into the agreement with interstate parking. On their behalf, because there's some, um, because they're statutory county, there's some things that they can't do. So we did that on their behalf. Any of the revenue that came in, we just cycled it back to them to help um. Support the subsidy on the shuttle. This year, uh, we took a more active role in that process and we. Um, tried to be a good partner with them in creating an RFP, in evaluating the RFPs that came in for parking and shuttle operations. Um, we worked with their staff pretty closely to make recommendations to the BOCC, which they did accept today, so. We were really happy with the direction that the BOCC took. Um, but there's two questions that we have for you that are related to this. Project and one is, are you good with us allowing for free parking in the South Gondola Lot for people using the shuttle? Um, the reason, I think a big part of the reason why staff recommends that is because it gets cars off the road. We really want people to use that shuttle and be successful and it's a bit cost prohibitive. To have to pay for the shuttle and pay for the parking, so. We'd like to do that. It's fairly easy for us to do with a coupon code. And then the other piece is, are we interested? Um, and agreeable to splitting the subsidy with the county, which is not something we really brought to you before because. The subsidy was quite high. Um, we believe with the decisions that they made today, that subsidy is probably gonna be somewhere. Total around about forty thousand dollars, could be forty to sixty maybe, but if we can get good ridership. Um, and the BOCC agreed to increase slightly the parking rates, um, so they'll make more revenue. Um, the subsidy should be fairly low. Uh, the other thing I guess I'll, I'll point out on that and hopefully I'm not giving too much away is that. Previously, there was a revenue split on the parking revenue between the provider and the county and. With the decision they made today, there'll be no revenue split, so all the parking revenue will go to supplementing the shuttle. So those are the two questions we have for you. Um, we really do support this. We think it gets cars off the road coming in and out of Breckenridge, so it's good for us. And we're hoping that if this is a successful model, it can be duplicated in other areas or replicated in other areas, so. Happy to answer questions.
Shannon, did the, the shuttle used to originate from the airport lot? What was, what was, what information did you get that brought you to South Gondola from airport?
Um, closer to town, so the route time was less, less traffic, you know, less distance on our roads with the shuttles. So it made more sense. In this season, this past season, it ran out of the South Gondola Lot.
Oh, it did?
It did. Yeah, it helps with the timing of the shuttle.
When you say um, the subsidy is forty to sixty, is that our share or is that half?
That would be total.
That's, so half of that would be our share.
That would be ours, yeah.
I think it's great to put him in the South Gondola Lot because I just think we need to get people more used to parking in that lot. And so the more exposure, I mean, some of these folks, you know, wouldn't have chosen the South Gondola Lot to park in, so. I think it's great to get that, just a little more exposure.
Kelly, I think it also helps if we have guests that are in Breck that want to go, they could take their hotel shuttle.
Yeah.
To the South Gondola Lot or walk, um, or if you go up there to hike and then you come back, you're still in town and maybe you go into town. And have a drink or dinner or something where if you're in Airport Road, you're more likely probably to leave.
Shannon, what kind of numbers are we talking? What, what, I, I know we've seen that data before. I don't remember what it was. How many people did the shuttle, sir?
Do you remember?
Yeah, it was twenty-three hundred is what their ridership was last year. And obviously, the, the, the idea this year is that the price has gone down substantially. Um, it's going to be free for locals and I think seven dollars for uh, everyone else. So it'll be. It, that will hopefully get people to, to start riding the shuttle a little bit more, but they're basing all of this off of the twenty-three hundred riders that they saw last year, so.
So if it's seven dollars per person, how much is it to park at the trailhead?
Uh, fifty?
Uh, fifty-five on peak days and thirty-five on non-peak days.
It sounds like this year the county's been really input to, or open to town input and I think because of that, I'd be. Open to helping with the subsidy because we are contributing and helping make decisions, so. Thanks for your work on that.
We have been very involved with it and we appreciate having a seat with them, so.
How often is it running?
Uh, I think it's every thirty minutes.
Uh, twenty or thirty, every twenty or thirty minutes from five to five every day, so. Three shuttles start in the morning and then as the morning rush gets less, one of those shuttles breaks off and runs just. Quandary to McCullough and just loops that throughout the day. Pretty good access for folks that want to do either Quandary or McCullough.
Refresh my memory, was the subsidy from the county last year like a quarter of a million bucks or higher, somewhere in there?
Uh, I think it was a little less than that. I think it was on, it was under two hundred thousand, but it was.
It was one ninety-five or something like that. Very close.
Okay, how's everybody feel about these two questions? Everybody good with supporting this?
One's a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Second one, I, yeah, I, I guess. I mean, it's, it's a good program.
I'd like to see us be at zero. I mean, that ideally, right, like raise the, the cost of parking four dollars for the season. That's my preference, but twenty's way better than two hundred, so that's a step in the right direction, but we need to just have it. Cover itself.
I think part of the reason, you know, they just didn't want to jack up the parking price too much. They're a little bit more sensitive to that. Negative feedback than we are because we're hard into it.
Enough.
So there was that piece of it, but they agreed to go a little bit higher and then the reduction in the price for the shuttle, as Matt said, was try to get more ridership. So I think if we can really market it well and get people to participate in the shuttle, we're gonna get closer and closer to that zero mark.
Yeah, and I certainly like the progression towards the shuttle. I think that's awesome, so.
All good? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, sustainability plan update. Burley's back.
Right. Um, so the biggest thing to highlight uh, from the sustainability memo is the timeline for marketing and advertising on pay-as-you-throw. Um, just today, we went in front of the Breckenridge Mountain Rotary to talk about this program. HC3 also did the Summit County Rotary this morning. Um, most of the paid advertising at the moment that you'll see out there is driving people towards the public forums in early April. And then there's a virtual uh, forum on May eleventh. Um, and then shortly after, so about April tenth or so, the more generic. Um, well, I should say programmatic specific, but more broad advertising will start rolling out um, for the program. Here I have two pieces of collateral that you'll start seeing. Um, one is a P O Box drop mailer that describes. The small bin for the wind messaging, trying to get people to downsize their trash. The other one is a business leave behind. Um, for the universal recycling component of the ordinance. So here's just two examples that you'll start seeing. Um. And. Yeah.
Cool, are those on recycling?
Um, you know what?
Have they been printed yet?
I don't know. I will follow up with HC3. I'm sure they considered that, but I don't know for a fact, so I will ask them. Yes, it's always a. It's always a challenge between whether or not you do the drop box or not, but they are, they can be effective, so. I will ask them, get back to you. Um, in the, in the uh, to supplement, I should say, this campaign on pay-as-you-throw, Brooke and I are working on some additional messaging. Around how to downsize your trash. What are the other options available? Um, looking at our free depots, carton recycling. Um, the glass and food scrap recycling as well, or depots, I should say. Um, so we're supplementing this campaign with that. Um, and you'll also see that just today, the Summit Daily picked up the press release on the upcoming forum. So there is an article in the paper right now on the um, the forums. Uh, so happy to answer questions on pay-as-you-throw and then I'll give you a quick update on material management.
So we're, those are going to the P O boxes?
One of these two, yeah, and the others are leave behind for site visits and whatnot with businesses.
What, what about doing, so there was already a program where HC3 or somebody went around and put some stuff on your garbage can.
The oops, oh, the oops.
Why don't we do that instead?
It's both.
Okay, because those are all just gonna end up in the trash.
The.
At the post office. I mean, they just will. That's just the reality of what goes on at the post office. You will know that the day we send those out, because they will all be in the trash. And I don't know if that's the message. And not everybody that has a post office box is gonna be part of the program, so I would. Rethink that part. I'd rather put them on everybody's trash can because they're the people that you know need to know.
Yeah.
I don't know how the rest of you feel about.
You know what that whole?
Door to door.
Door to door.
I think direct mailers is a really efficient tool for grabbing people and if you look at those flyers, it's a really high-level message, like no one's gonna stop and read. Fine print, so it's not the, I mean, it's one method of reaching people that I think does have. Um, some efficiency. Um, I think one avenue we need to continue to explore is non-paid outreach. Again, it sounds like you're doing it, meeting with the rotaries, like get information out through HOAs, really um, target groups that we know. Are using it and of course, the haulers are our main partners. It sounds like they're pretty amenable to. Having some of our messaging in there, so there's consistency in messaging and um, it looks like it's fairly well thought out. Reaching people a lot of different ways and key is just consistency in messaging. There's a lot of places. I think our website is great and there's the HC3 website, but making sure there's consistency. Where we're sending people and how we're messaging them, but.
I mean.
Let me, let me, I, I guess I didn't really explain what I meant. I know people will look at them.
Yeah.
I think it's a crappy message that we're giving you stuff to throw away right away. I mean, we're working on recycling and these are all gonna go in the trash. At the post office and I think that part of the message is contrary what, to what we're trying to do and to the, the. Programmatic message of changing people's habits with recycling. We're giving. Everybody stuff in their box that they're gonna look at and maybe it'll be effective, but it's going in the trash. At the post office right away. Nobody's gonna take it home. Where if we do them at their home, at least they're at their home and then they can recycle them.
Hundred percent agree and I think I'd almost rather see it go digital, like text or email or whatever, door knocking, but the, the. Paper message, I'm with you on the paper messaging. It just feels weird.
But I, I think that, that oops thing, you know, like kind of recycling narc that goes, yeah, looks. But they put a, could they zip tie something on your barrel?
Yeah, I think that's awesome.
Yeah, but if they did that, not for oops, for this, yes, for that, yeah, I think that, is that what you said?
That's what I said.
I wasn't listening.
Yeah.
Is that not recycling that we all?
Because it's a blue thing that says recycling on it.
If you're over there when, like during political season, some people recycle and a bunch of it just goes in the trash or on the floor. I mean, it's just the reality of how people are. We're trying to change people's perception of recycling in our community. And find out, not do the right thing.
I think it's an optics, thank you.
There'll be a picture of, of Breckenridge is so trendy and there's all this recycling traction. But that stuff, we could turn that into a, a, a oops thing, right?
Yeah, so I don't want to confuse it with the oops campaign, which is the, the second tier to the implementation approach. And that is educating people about what's actually in their bin. But yes, in terms of deployment, it is an option that we can look at.
Delivery system.
Yeah.
Is this, could be the same as, as oops.
Yep.
So humiliating, Jesse early put stuff on there, recycle my bong water.
Jesse, um, I saw the recycle right marketing was slated for fall, winter. And I just, I feel like we're, we're in this, I know we're, we're shoving a lot to people, but we're changing people's habits right now. And I think that the recycle right marketing should be in concert with that. So not only are we changing their habits one way, but we're not going to be changing their habits again this fall. And there's just like, there's a lot of recycling right marketing that, you know, we've spoken about before about, you know, what is the correct way to recycle where all these efforts aren't for naught? Like that if the cap has to come off the milk containers that we're talking about that. If the labels have to come off of the plastics, if there's only certain plastics that should go in there. Like what are the things that we need to get out now that are, maybe it's the top three or five things that we need to communicate that will make all this effort worthwhile? Because if we go through all this and all of it is being contaminated unintentionally, then what are we doing here? And then we're going to have to change behaviors all over again.
Yeah, so, um, again, Brooke and I are supplementing some of this information with recycle right and how, and how to downsize in particular. One thing, we actually talked about this a little bit at the Rotary today. Between how we approach the contamination and education, when right now, two thirds of the community doesn't even have access to recycling. So we're trying, so, so a third of the community has access to, I should say, curbside recycling. So to curbside recycling, um, and if we really push a recycle right message to those people, you're missing two thirds of your audience that will eventually have to learn how to recycle right. But they're, they don't even have access to recycling today. And so it's kind of a timing thing where we want to make sure that people are ramping up and have access to service before we really hit that directly with, with paid, paid advertising. So we're trying to figure out how, I hear you loud and clear, but from a paid advertising perspective, there's a reason why we're waiting and that's because the larger audience won't have, they don't have access to service until later in the year.
I would just, I guess, it's semantics, but they do have access to recycling. It's just not curbside. And I think that you look at that Be Like Breck, um, messaging and that was, that campaign lasted a year with just a couple of simple tips that resonated that we heard about constantly. And to, to use that formula that we know that works and start now and start ingraining the correct behavior and the right processes so that when it is curbside, that those things are inherent and just are automatic. Seems to be more advantageous than trying to start that in the fall. That's just my feeling.
What are the obstacles to, to doing door-to-door delivery of those other than cost of labor? Or is that the big obstacle? Why, why, I mean, you're, you obviously chose the mailboxes for a reason.
And I'm, I don't want to point the finger at anyone, but I did not choose. So the, so the HC three was responsible for working with the marketing agency and they made those decisions. I think for the oops tags in particular, they do go out with the hauler on designated routes and they are trying to measure contamination improvement. So it's, they're trying to be a little bit more, um, scientific about it, so to speak, but, but if we, if we switch our strategy to what you guys are suggesting, then it's really just going out to anybody that has something on the curb during the day of pickup. But with the oops tags, you're really targeting those recycling businesses and you're going out with the haulers on the actual route. Okay. So it's a little different, but.
Jesse, does our, um, ordinance, I can't remember if we, we're going to pay for the drop off of the bins because I called Timberline last week just as the interest of customer. And they said that it's going to be a twenty-five dollar drop off fee and I couldn't remember, did we say where we're gonna?
Yeah, so the way that we have it, um, there, and let me just say, there's been some turnover at Timberline. And so that cost is half of what it typically costs to deliver a bin. And they negotiated that with us so that we can pay that on the first change. So anyone that does not have recycling today and, and gets a bin delivered and anyone who downsizes the first time will get rebated. And the way that we're working it out right now with Timberline is that we're going to pay them directly on the customer's behalf. So it'll be a line item on your bill where you get charged it and then you'll see it come off. And the, the town will just pay that directly to Timberline. We, Waste Management has indicated to us at least thus far that they are not going to charge a bin delivery. Their bin delivery typically is seventy-five dollars to pick it up and, and take it away. So we have brought those costs down and we have budgeted to support residents for that first exchange.
Okay.
And you talked about doing a pickup, like, uh, general, you know, like at their airport road area where they could bring a hundred bins?
Oh, yeah, we, so we did talk to them about that and they felt like both companies individually, independently had said kind of the same thing. And that was that it was too hard for them to track customers and they felt like it was too much of a barrier for the customer to throw their ninety-six gallon in their little subie and bring it down to Public Works or wherever we would host it. So we carried that discussion through till about end of January and then we decided we were going to nix it because it was easier for them to just deploy in a whole neighborhood at once. So, yeah, we did, we did tease that out a bit.
Yeah.
Great.
Just really quickly on the material management fee, we have, um, as of this morning, we've had about fifty-five businesses or I should say qualified units make their payments. We are in the process right now of either consolidating some accounts by landlord or separating them depending on how they wanted to approach it. Um, and we're continuing our outreach. A lot of people didn't get the initial email, yada, yada. So a lot of, um, follow-up right now, but people are, are making their payments, so.
First of all, I really liked the, uh, blast drop off at the Stables Lot and the compost drop off. And is it possible to get, um, food carton bin there? Or is that just kind of not, not many people use that?
So we talked about that with HC three and, um, now I'm forgetting the specific details, but it, the volume that they get in cartons was not worth the cost of the, of the service at the time. So they'll continue to monitor that. All of those depots are paid for through strong future funding. So while we put up the land for that location that's paid for by the county, um, and, and they know that it's on your mind. But it, it's just not, right now it's not recommended.
Every time I'm there, someone's dropping off glass or, or compost, it's great, so.
That's awesome.
Well done.
And we're looking to enclose that potentially as part of the Stables development. So we're looking at how to make it look a little bit better.
Sweet.
All right.
My turn?
Yeah.
So at the last work session, uh, we are talking about pricing for the Breck E-Ride, the e-bike share program. And council gave direction to wanting to see the locals' membership, uh, options lower. So what you have in your packet is, uh, the revised pricing that staff and drop mobility worked out. Um, it's twenty percent lower than what we had, uh, proposed last meeting. It's a twenty dollar a month for the monthly membership or eighty dollars for the season pass. And we're going to add in there some early bird promo pricing discounts where if you buy, buy Father's Day, June eighteenth, you can get your season pass for fifty bucks or a monthly pass for fifteen. So wanted to see if that was on the right track for council or if you had any additional feedback on that.
Is that going to cost us more?
It does not drop. We're able to go down to twenty and eighty. There's no cost to do that.
Right.
Yeah.
I still don't think it's cheap enough. And I wouldn't mind if we supplemented it a, a bit. So, and part of it is, so it's twenty bucks a month. Well, why not just get the monthly? You're talking about June, July, August and September, that's your eighty bucks there. Sure, you get, maybe you get some of October, but there's really no savings between the monthly and the season pass except for the purchase by Father's Day is actually.
What about the, the, the promo pricing that we put in there, fifteen and fifty? Is that?
I think that's, I mean, I.
If we just made that the bench, the base pricing model for the whole season, does that feel more?
It does to me. I'm afraid nobody's going to use this.
You know, I.
It's still my concern.
At the same high point, I think if we can kind of seduce people to use it because it's a great deal, I think they'll find the value of it and use it more readily next year. I don't want this thing to, to, you know, bomb.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So if we have to subsidize it, underwrite it to a certain degree and it's a success, that's, I think that's money well spent considering, you know, what we're spending on all, other things like this, you know, so.
What does everybody else feel about that?
I agree with you a hundred percent on that. It'd be great to subsidize it and get uptake and get people using it. And, you know, if there's a hundred users at twenty bucks a month that we're subsidizing, like, great, that's money well spent by the town, in my opinion.
I'm okay with, I, it may depend as long as it's not a huge number.
Yeah, since it's a pilot year, it's.
So for the monthly membership, if, is there a number that resonates with anyone on council? Let's say in the fifteen, ten to fifteen dollar range.
Well, I think fifteen's good because you actually want to drive people to buy the season. So the monthly's got to be more expensive.
Okay.
Than the season, right? So I think fifteen's great because that puts you, say for four months, that puts you sixty bucks.
Fifteen is good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think those are good targets.
Just a clarifying question. So when you're talking about a potential subsidy to the user, they should be, they should be paying and you're, and I think I'm hearing you're comfortable at fifty dollars. Like the user should be paying fifty dollars. Okay. We get there is the negotiating part.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. But I think councils would subsidize part of that back to the vendor.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we can, um, we can work with that. That's good direction. Um, and then just other, you know, wanted to plug, we are doing an outreach session for the bike shops on April eleventh. And also Drop Mobility is going to be coming and we're going to be giving a more robust presentation of what to expect with, uh, the e-bike share program this summer.
Have we gotten any pushback from the bike shops?
During the feasibility study, there was not overwhelming support for the, the bike shop from their perspective. I mean, it, they do see it as competition, even though we have structured it in a way to really go out of our way to make it not competitive with them. So, you know, we're hoping to get some, some more input from them at that info session and then also explain, you know, the things that we put in place to really make it not competitive with their business.
Yeah, I was sensitive for that initially, but I think how we're formatting this, it's just going to be locals on short trips. Or, you know, they're not going to ride the first because they're not going to be in the rec path that much. They're going to be kind of going around town.
Yeah.
You know, so.
But I think it's great. You're out doing outreach in case there's something we haven't thought of, that, that they have a problem with.
Yeah.
If they have a lot of problem with the pay as you go, I almost wonder if we don't really need that, you know? And then it would really just be a locals program only. And if, you know, someone from out of town wanted to use it and pay the full fee, I guess, oh, no, available only to locals, then you couldn't. I don't know, the three dollars to unlock, I wouldn't, if it's just going to be for visitors, I wouldn't mind either seeing that go away completely or be more expensive. Problem with the bike shops.
Yeah, let's see what they say.
I was hoping we could, we could run it by them first and see what their, what their input was before we.
Mess with it.
Yeah.
But now. No one's listening, don't worry.
He's listening. Wouldn't worry about it.
Pretty daily, I guess.
Okay, all right.
Great, thank you. Uh, housing and childcare. Oh, we're behind. What's going on here?
You told everyone.
I know.
Good afternoon. Um, we did have some minutes in your packet. I don't know if you had any questions on the minutes, but I do have quite a few updates on other items. And I'll just jump into those.
Let's jump into it, yeah.
Um, housing help, some of you may have noticed some recent articles in the daily about the county reducing their contribution to housing helps, um, which definitely will have an impact on our housing helps program since we rely on the county to share in the cost of probably eighty percent of our housing helps applications. And it really results in, you know, the total cost of a buy down right now or of, of the housing helps is running about a hundred and seventy-one thousand a unit. But because of the county's participation, the cost of the town is only a hundred and thirty thousand. So if they back away from, um, providing funding and cooperating on that, that will, we will either get fewer units than we budgeted for or we'll, um, have to figure out how to really prioritize housing helps units. And so we talked today about really focusing on units that are in key neighborhoods, um, owner occupied units, those kinds of things. So we're talking internally about some strategies to deal with the county, sort of reducing their funding. Pardon me?
What's their reasoning?
Um, they were seeing, um, not in the upper blue, but they were seeing elsewhere in the county that a lot of their housing helps funding was going to existing owners who were not occupants. It was investors who owned units who could no longer short term and were therefore long-terming and going to the county for housing helps funds to long-term put a deed restriction on it when really that's the, the use that they were going to have to do since they're investors and they can't short term it. So a lot of their funding was going towards existing owners who were investors. We didn't see that here.
That's still a super short sighted way to look at it. Just because they're investors today doesn't mean that they're going to own that property forever. And now it's deed restricted forever.
Absolutely. I think it was just the sheer volume of the requests that they were receiving, so they were going through their fund. So they basically have decided for now, they put a pause on, um, housing helps for, um, current owners. They're still participating fully if it's a buy, buying situation. Um, but for now, they're not going to participate on the current owners. So we'll see how that impacts us. We're going to analyze it over the next three months or so. Housing helps have been super busy for us right now. So, um, you know, if we end up having to spend more per housing helps, we just need to spend more per housing helps because it's very important for us to get those units. Wow, the getting's good.
Still cheaper than building.
Still cheaper than building.
That we, I mean, we need to talk to the commissioners about that. That's an important, that this is not just about today. This is the future and deed restricting as much as we can while we can.
And preserving existing stock. There's so many reasons.
Recycling.
Our most important strategy, housing helps and buy downs, really, I mean.
Right?
Yeah.
Teddy shouldn't be laughing about that because it's the truth.
Um.
She totally threw you under the bus, by the way.
Housing helps, um, buy down's been super busy too. And, um, you know, every day our, our tracking log changes. So I had Corey come over so she can give us the, as of today at three thirty, since we're around, because we are buying, we are selling. Lots is going on with, and we're reducing some prices. So, um, I'll let Corey give a quick update.
So for twenty twenty-three, we've already sold five of our buy downs that we had. As of, we have, um, three more under contract as of today. Um, and today we reduced prices on our two Grandview apartments. Those have become difficult for us to sell just because of some of the restrictions that they have there. And then, uh, we have one under contract to buy and then we have two contracts out being considered by owners. So buy downs have been really busy as well.
Sweet.
Um, and working really hard to prepare for as staff move into block eleven so that we're ready to put those on the market and get those sold. Those are all our kind of one bedroom, so we're going to hopefully phase those a little bit. Because we have about eight of them to consider selling, uh, but pricing is great on those. So hopefully we'll hit the market right at the ti, right at the best time for selling for the summer.
What, what's the, the Grandview restrictions that are prohibitive?
Uh, the biggest is that you can't have any pets. Uh, the biggest is that you can't have any pets at all. So even if it were an indoor pet, you're not supposed to have it. Yeah. It's listed as no pets at all. And we did have a buyer for one of our units. We have two for sale there now. And they had a cat, an indoor cat, and it was a no-go, so.
Yeah, like they check?
Well, it's a, without, I mean, we couldn't encourage them to break the rules, but that one happens to be a ground floor apartment. So I think you'd be able to see it in the, okay, control them looking out the window, right?
Um, quick update, since you mentioned block eleven and moving people out of our transition units into block eleven. Um, we do have two of those buildings occupied. Um, the third building, we are still working on figuring out them, the mechanical system before we um, move ahead and occupy that unit as well. But the two buildings that are, at least one of the buildings that is occupied, we are definitely having some eat, some issues with the mechanical system. So we have some tenants are, that who are staying a little chilly because the mechanical system is only operating at half capacity, trying to figure out what's going on with that. Um, MW's been very cooperative and REG's been cooperative and trying to figure out um, how we can get that mechanical system up and running a hundred percent. But just wanted you to be aware that um, we do have tenants there and we are dealing with them, getting the building operating a hundred percent. Um, quick update on Alta Verity one. Um, just a month ago, we had only twenty-six people moved, moved in. Um, by the end of this week, we expect seventy-two of those apartments to be occupied, so um, tripled the number we had a month ago. So things have really stepped up in terms of being able to um, just get through those applications and find the folks who are really the most needy to get into that complex. So um, by the end of the week, we probably will only have eight units available in Alta Verity one. So that's a good thing.
Great news.
I think that is all of our updates, unless you have any questions.
Or is it possible to, for us to, um, and doesn't even have to be organized, but is it possible to see the block eleven apartments? I just, I was so interested in seeing, you know, before that third one is occupied of this was, you know, when it came through planning, it was really a model that we hope to be able to replicate on its uh, efficiency and, and layout and everything. And um, I guess, so I was wondering, is it possible that we might be able to-
Oh, absolutely. We'll try to schedule something. Um, I don't know if we'd try to do something right before your next council meeting or something. We'll figure out a time that works and make it available.
And is the issue that you're having mechanically, the electric heat pump?
Yeah, it has to do with the heat pumps um, and the compressors. And right now, everybody's trying to figure out um, if it's an install issue or if it's an equipment issue. Um, you know, we'll know more um, after they're bringing in a um, a tech actually from Salt Lake um, who specializes in this particular system um, to evaluate it. Because we've had REG look at it, they feel that it's functioning as they designed it. Um, but um, definitely not getting the units up to where we want to see them.
Are you seeing any similar um, concerns at Alta Verity with their, those electric heat pumps there?
They have mini splits, as I understand, which is one of the big difference. They have the mini split sort of configuration of their mechanical system. Um, we have a couple very large um, heat pumps, so kind of a different design. And no, I don't think they're having any issues.
Hey, uh, I saw on the agenda the Valleybrook rental request. What is that?
Um, that was a request from a current owner um, to be able to rent their unit beyond the one year period that's allowed. And the committee was supportive of that, but only for one additional year, really because there is an existing family in there that's the tenant, and they're running it to it at a very affordable rate. They can't afford to buy right now. Um, so um, the committee felt it was worthwhile giving the owner and the tenant an additional year to see if maybe they could come to some arrangement. Um, but after that second year would be over. Um, the other one thing I did have on my notes is that I think Kirsten and I will be getting back to you on um, sort of resale process and our ability on the lottery and our ability to really um, maybe require the PPAs earlier in the process so that we, if we want to um, withhold our due to trust, we can know about it sooner in the process. So it's on our list to, to, for Kirsten and I to work on.
Excellent.
We're really trying to think of any possible solution short of lottery.
Yeah.
True. And are we gonna have, I don't know if it was in this packet or last, focus groups with owners, or are we gonna continue to?
Yeah, I think of what we had, sort of the, the conversation, I think at the committee level is that for projects going forward, we absolutely should be um, requiring lotteries at the time of resale. For um, existing neighborhoods, um, we would like to get some feedback from owners to understand, you know, what would be their concerns with applying a lottery or their way we could address concerns, just to understand um, how it might be received by current owners. Maybe their support, it makes it a lot easier for sellers to avoid the, the stress of-
Right.
Having to figure out who you sell to. It's not easy on either side.
Yeah. Yeah, especially if you have a bunch of friends.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for the uh, for the price drops on the buy downs, you know, as you guys both know, really appreciate that. And I think it's, there's, there's so much value for our town and freeing up those funds and efficiently and thoughtfully pricing those to, to move them so we can do it again and again, because it's important. So thank you.
Yeah, I think those, um, definitely those two units specifically really needed a reduction just because of the HOA issues. I mean, they're great units for locals, but that's a big deal when you can't have a pet.
Yeah. Anything else? Thank you. Good sir. Reports, there was one report that Carol will probably tell us about later. We have the minutes attached, uh, financials. Hi, Dave.
Mayor and Council.
Hey. How y'all doing today? Doing well, thank you. Um, just have the preliminary early two thousand and twenty-three financials for your review. Um, one thing I wanted to note was, if you look at the excise tax, we're running really favorable to budget. Um, I'm gonna look at the phasing, so I, I'm not ready to say we would be twelve million over budget for the year. Um, as you know, we took a ten percent haircut when we did the budget. If you look at the sales for January, we're running just about a percent over two thousand and twenty-two. So um, anyway, uh, it's good news, better to be that way than the other, for sure. But I just wanted to note that piece. Um, as mentioned, from a overall, by industry perspective, we're about one point six percent higher than two thousand and twenty-two, January twenty-two year-over-year comparison. And if you look as compared to two thousand and nineteen, we are running in the month forty percent higher. Okay? We did eliminate two thousand and twenty in this graphical view because we wanted to keep two thousand and nineteen, and it was gonna get real busy with numbers, so we hit twenty. If you have any information on twenty, we can get that. Um, the only other component I will touch on um, is related to our, I'll call it our full fund view of year-to-date um, at the back of the packet. And the primarily thing is, we're running about four million over budget year-to-date on revenue. Um, half of that was in the taxes. The other half is really, most of it's sitting in parking and transportation. We're gonna look at the budget phasing on that. I'm not willing to say we're gonna, once again, exceed that. And then on the expenses, um, we are running under on compensation. We, when we did the budget, we assumed full staff. We're not. And we assumed a pay increase for everybody Janu- January first, because it'll be spread throughout the year. But, you know, just to ease a budgeting, we did that. We're gonna redo that in twenty-four. We'll phase it based on people's anniversary dates. But for this year, we did, did it January. So we'll run under initially, and then we should catch up as the year goes on. And um, and then on the expense side, uh, you know, on the major thing is, once again, budget phasing on the capital fund. I, you know, I think we'll definitely spend the money, but we're running under so far, year-to-date perspective, but we're about five million under in expense. Once again, I don't think that'll carry through for the entire year. And open to any questions you might, hmm?
We'll make sure of that.
We'll spend it. Don't worry about that. Any questions?
I really appreciate that revenue and expenditure summary uh, that you put in there, and I, I think it's absolutely fantastic, and it really gives us a great kind of bird's eye view of what's happening. Just to clarify what's in there and what's not, because I imagine this is a table that we'll be seeing on a regular basis.
Right.
Um, none of our reserves are in there, right? That is just revenue and-
It's gross. We can add the restrictions if you want to see that, definitely below the line, if you will. Um, we've got that information.
It's more of just clarifying-
Right.
what's in there and what's not, but um, I think that's fantastic, and I really appreciate you putting that together for us.
We've got a whole workbook. This is the summary, if you ever want to see it. And just a quick update, uh, had a meeting this past couple of weeks ago at First Bank, uh, with Brady. Um, and with everything that's been going on in banking, we had a, we had a good meeting, and I feel good about where we are from our town banking from that perspective. Excellent. And I don't know if you know Brady's moved on. He has. I had, went and had a meeting with him right before that also, about the same exact topic. Oh, good timing. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right, town attorney update. Town attorney?
I know. Mayor Council, this is a placeholder for us to include some legislative updates, but I assume you're gonna cover the land use bill, and I will not-
Brought all my notes.
Okay, so unless you, I tried to get this into the packet, but the land use bill came out in the meantime. So I circulated one, uh, kind of highlight of what we think are important bills. If you have any questions, let me know. And then I will let the mayor take, tackle the one hundred and six page beast.
Yee-haw. Scary beast. Yeah. And we'll do, I'll do that later. Uh, HR staffing and analytics update.
Good evening. Evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I included in your packet some information, some HR data. Um, just our quarterly data, but this is actually two thousand and twenty-two. So to wrap up two thousand and twenty-two data, the Q one two thousand and twenty-three will come out after we close out March. So what you see is two thousand and twenty-two. Um, and we were trending better in turnover. You can see Q four did enough. Um, it did continue to go down, but in Q, in Q four, that's, that's pretty typical as I lined up it when I did the last time I spoke with you. So I'm not surprised that turnover went down a little bit in Q four. People don't move as much in Q four. Um, by department, you can see um, Public Works and Police are kind of our, are, are our departments that trend a little bit higher, both in turnover and of course in vacancy rate. Our historical turnover data is trending down from twenty-five percent in two thousand and twenty-one to twenty percent turnover in twenty-seven, in two thousand and twenty-two, so twenty percent in two thousand and twenty-two, excuse me. Um, it is not at pre-pandemic levels, but we are trending better than we were in two thousand and twenty-one. Um, I will say, just as a precursor for two thousand and twenty-three, I do believe things look better already. Um, this year, we have more hires, we have more applicants coming in already. Um, I'm optimistic, but I'll wait and see, I'll wait to see officially what it looks like in Q one, but I'm optimistic. Um, so back to two thousand and twenty-two, you'll see in the second quarter, we had a lot of individuals leave for what we coded as other employment, and that did taper off towards the end of the year in quarter three and quarter four, which I think is encouraging. That is related to a lot of promotions we had, and as well as the pay increases and some other things that we're trying in order to retain employees. The, I think it's interesting to know the average tenure of current full-time year-round employees is about almost six years, which I think is an at, an interesting data point. I also think it's interesting that um, the age of employee, that the age of employees leaving mostly are between thirty and thirty-nine year olds. Um, our applicant volume is only slightly higher than two thousand and twenty-one. I wouldn't say it's uh, a lot more, but you can see there's a little bit more applicants coming in, in two thousand and twenty-two. And I am available for questions if you have any on the information I provided.
Hey, when it says separation dat- data,
Hmm.
what's involuntary, involuntary?
Involuntary is usually performance.
It's what?
Fired.
Oh, yeah. Involuntary means it was, it was usually an agreement that the um, performance wasn't-
Do that with counsel, right?
Uh, no, but they can't. The, the people out there can, if they want. Other questions?
How we doing by department? Are there any departments that are having like more vacancies than others that, that-
Cops.
Where you're seeing?
The police department.
Look Works doing okay?
Would be probably the second, correct.
Ivan, those vacancies, is it, is it pay, is it housing? Is there, are there other pieces that were, that we can help out with?
Um, that's a good question. I think if, if you were to ask uh, Chief Baird, he's optimistic that it's turning around. I think it was um, just the nature of what was going on in the department, whatever it was, people were looking, moving, individuals were seeking other employment. Um, but he's optimistic on his employees at this point. And I believe at Public Works, the housing and the pay is going to um, is going to help turn around their turnover, their vacancy.
Would there be any value to set aside units at stables to try and make sure some of these traditional vacancies in departments get filled? Like, you know, is there momentum to do that? Does that help solve the problem if you had, say, a couple of two bedrooms or three bedrooms in the town home set aside? Can we even do that?
I mean, I think we have units available for transitional housing, so I'm not worried that we don't have that. And I don't know that I would pull units out of the lottery for that purpose. Um, like Dana said, I think PD is really seeing a better turnaround of applications now and qualified people. And some of the legislation that was implemented over the past couple of years just caused some people to decide it wasn't for them.
Yeah.
Um, so I think they're seeing a turnaround in that. And I do think we have housing for most of the people that we need, at least transitionally, so.
Yeah, cool.
I think our variety, we have very transitional now at the lodge. We have the one bedrooms where individuals can stay a few years at Coto Flats and some other places. We have the down payment now, so those individuals looking to purchase. And I believe the whole array of options will hit the mark. We just have to give it a little bit of time.
And PD has a little bit longer of a runway as well, right? Like, it takes a, a full year, right? To get Pete from when you hire someone, if they're not coming from another police department somewhere else, to get them where they need to be. And, yeah, so it just takes time to, to catch up.
I would agree with that. I think Jim would agree as well.
Jim, I'm sorry, you need to come down and speak into the microphone.
Rick's on dial-up in Arizona.
Thank you.
The thunder on two thousand and twenty-three, I think.
I am. Um, right now, we actually have accepted offers for every one of our vacancies. Um, so we, we, we actually have caught up now. That's not to say that we still won't lose people in our process. We have the most intensive hiring process in the town. And so, you know, we tend to lose people at different uh, spots. In addition to the time it takes to onboard somebody that Jay mentioned, we also are competing with several other departments or other police departments. And so what we find is that sometimes if they're able to move a little faster, the offer gets taken somewhere else. But we're in a pretty good place now, though. You've explained to them the difference, though, between Breck and the other communities, right? About the board, the elected board, yep, yep.
Listen, you said it, not me.
Most of this too.
Was the citizens advisory. That's what you said before.
It's on the ice.
The stick.
You know, the, the cops have to go through psych testing, all, all kinds of stuff.
Yeah.
You know, once the offer's received. So when he, Jim says there could be some dropout, that they're very well may be.
Yeah, well, you know what? I'll, I'll be off council a year in April, and I'm ready to serve.
I, I'm not sure you passed the psych test.
Some other test.
An application.
No, I, you know, and, and, and Chin and touched on it, that the, some of the legislature, um, a couple of years ago, that, you know, maybe nationwide was necessary, I don't know, but um, you know, it, it, it really deterred nationwide.
Yeah.
Um, the end, you know, the, the profession a bit. And um, and seeing some come back, you know, you were-
Yeah, Dana calls them boomerangs.
Yeah.
I call them the boomerang employees, and that's what we're seeing is that individuals in not just police, but other departments are beginning to come back, come back to the area. in not just police, but other departments are beginning to come back, come back to the area, come back to employment for various reasons.
Well, that's great. Cool. Thank you. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, we have a RIMP. Renewable Energy Mitigation Program Work Session. Jesse's back. Hard work in the night.
Last discussion, I promise. And Mark is going to join me because we, well, for a lot of reasons, but we did take the RIMP proposal and idea to the Planning Commission back in February and we got some really good feedback and points to consider, which is what has sort of taken us a little bit of time to come back to you all. Um, I included some of their thoughts and concerns in the memo. Um, is there anything you want to recap about the Planning Commission in particular?
No, I mean, they had some um concerns, particularly Ethan about heat tape and you know, what we were doing in terms of really would, would it make any difference in the, in the end? I think the way we were changing the wording on that or developing that, it's going to be um to work on being efficient as much as it can. So um, the problem is, is a lot of times you don't need it turned on, your heat tape turned on. You don't want it turned on in the summertime. So, those are a couple of things. Um, uh, other issues that came up were um, let's see, we talked about safety in high pedestrian traffic areas. So that's one concern that um you know, we have addressed in the ordinance and the building official can provide an exception for that. For, you know, if it's right next to the gondola, for example, or something like that, where there's a lot of people going through. We're not going to ding someone for outdoor heated area, um, you know, having to offset in that kind of case, so um, and then some other minor things with planning commission, where overall the discussion went pretty well.
And so to recap, um, some of the council's input from January twenty-fifth, which staff has been working on since that time. Um, you all had some concerns about the overall size of snow melt systems and we tried to rework a, a potential proposal with that. There were also concerns around the um absolute number of gas appliances that could be installed, and so we think we have a pretty adequate proposal for that. Um, there was some discussion about how this plays into policy thirty-three R, which is currently the disincentive um, in the development code right now for outdoor energy efficiency or outdoor energy use, I should say, excessive use. Um, and then a bit about owner communications and how involved the owner was in the application process, so the two questions are really, there's sort of four pieces to the two questions that we need to ask you all tonight um, to try and get on the same page and be able to bring back an ordinance for your consideration. Um, so I'll start with snow melt in particular, so um, staff had asked whether or not, or excuse me, and the council had asked staff whether or not we should do a total cap on the snow melt systems, um, and then this would be divided by residential and by commercial. And in looking at the other programs and trying to come up with a number, staff didn't feel like we had enough information to just give you a number, like it, it really, it's a policy decision, it what number do we want to see? Pitt King County is the only community that does have a cap and it's on residential. It's not on commercial and it's at six thousand square feet, which seems really high. So we didn't feel like we had enough um, to go off of. We did go back and look uh, five years back at the um, residential and commercial projects that have been installed since twenty eighteen. Um, and we've seen a couple trickle in already for twenty twenty-three, um, and those it wasn't an exact average, but in looking at the, the commonalities across those, we were actually seeing that policy thirty-three R really does drive size already, which is great news. So we've already been um, mitigating to some extent through that program, because you'll see a lot come in at like four hundred and ninety-nine or nine hundred and ninety-eight, right? So those five hundred square foot increments really do make a difference. Um, and so on the residential side, staff is proposing um, that, and, and let me remind you, a hundred square feet is, would be allowed by right, and that is you know, along your apron of your garage door, whatever it is that you want to decide. And that we would do between a hundred and one square feet up to fifteen hundred square feet. Um, would be a hundred percent mitigated under the RIMP program, so it's sort of what we've been proposing all along. Anything above the fifteen hundred square feet would also incur negative points under thirty-three R in five hundred square foot increments. So it's sort of we feel like the financial incentive under RIMP is driving this, but it, but there was some concern on council that it wasn't enough, and so for the bigger, the bigger the system goes, you also get dained with those negative points to continue to uh, use that policy mechanism. And so we want to know, does that sound good to council, or do you want to see an absolute cap? Um, which we don't have a recommendation for at this time.
Do the um do the points ever max out, or is every five hundred you'd get?
It, it, um, the way it works right now, Kelly, is it's five hundred, um, five hundred square feet is one negative point, the next five hundred is another. And then it um, increases a little bit in that it goes to um increments of, um, so five hundred to nine hundred ninety-nine is minus two. But then one thousand to twenty-four ninety-nine is minus three. And then above that twenty-five, um basically for every additional five thousand square feet, there's an additional negative point. So it starts out at small increments and then it jumps up to larger increments.
So in real, in reality, it creates a cap, because at some point you can't mitigate that many negative.
Heard that. There's a point where it's just not.
Well, what do we do about um somebody that's adding on to a system? Since you can't give negative points.
So um, the, the additional square footage is what's calculated under RIMP, so the, the existing system is existing, we can't do anything about it, but any new square footage would be uh, a hundred percent RIMP mitigation offset. Realistically, those, those addition, like on a, on a residential home, well, I shouldn't, I shouldn't say that. I didn't, we didn't pull the data on those. My hunch is that you're not expanding it three thousand square feet for a residential property. I don't know that.
Unless you didn't do it because you couldn't pass.
The first, you mean under the existing one, right?
Yeah, that's good, that's good thought, Eric.
There needs to be some catch for that, because you could install fifteen hundred pass and then go back next summer and dig it up. And put in what you wanted originally. Think we could build that in.
Yeah, yeah, great. How's everybody feel about these numbers as, as is though?
I, I'm okay with the numbers. I'm concerned with the position it puts the building official in to, you know, when you say they can determine, you know, there's a safety issue and it could be exempted, I I just, I, I'm concerned we're going to see people putting the high pressure on our building officials and, and putting them in a really tough spot, so if there's any way to put some parameters in there to help protect those guys and, and protect us as well. You know, I, I, I'd love to think about, yeah, have the staff think about that a little bit. Because, you know, the, the developers, or at least some of the developers can get quite aggressive and things like that. You know, that, that's a concern to me.
Yeah, we'll, we'll give that some thought. I mean, the buffer we had before was a planning commission, that the recommendation always went to the planning commission. Um, but under this scenario, if you were in those lower point thresholds, it could be a decision made by the building official.
Or if they're in the lower point thresholds, it's not a huge impact. I guess I'm thinking more of the big ones. You know, where it's going to be high, a lot of square footage.
Well, this would only be commercial anyway.
What's that?
Those are only commercial anyway.
Well, not always.
I think, I think in almost all those cases, it would be going to the planning commission and staff would be providing a recommendation.
Because you wouldn't get that on a, on a single family home. You don't get to add more snowmelt for life safety at a single family home.
Right.
Because there's not the kind of traffic that you get at, say, the gondola.
Sure. But I'd still want to if, if we can think of some good parameters to, to put those in to protect, because uh well, the big developers are the, sometimes the most aggressive.
Uh, you will, yes.
Um, so the numbers I threw out at you were just for residential, but similarly, and, and same, same methodology for commercial, although um, the negative points under policy thirty-three R would kick in at five thousand square feet. Um, we've seen a couple of projects over the last couple of years, like the uh, I'm sorry if I get the name wrong, Breck, Breck Marketplace. Um, out there off Yeah, so the, so they're coming in, I think around the, just shy of five thousand mark. Um, some of the bigger hotels, of course, are, are, are much higher than that, and so um, commercial just has the scale that is really hard to like put a number on, and so we, we looked at common ones um, for reasonable projects and came up with the five thousand square feet, and then anything that you know, goes above that would incur negative points.
So if something got exempt reasons, does it count in that five thousand threshold or not?
No, so you would, you would apply your exemption, so the calculator allows for an automatic hundred square feet per emergency egress, and then after that, you, you could adjust that exemption, and then the calculator would help you.
If the building official exempted a certain amount of snow melt.
You would just plug it in.
So it, it doesn't count. So we could have, well, end up with a lot of snow melt and bigger projects.
Well, you, you, you might, but in order to mitigate it, right, you have to either put, I mean, solar or some kind of renewable on your roof, or you pay a fee in lieu, and we, and the experience in these programs is that that is limiting, it, it, it is, it does what it's intended to do.
Adds up pretty quickly.
The other thing, um, because um, a couple of you brought it up last time on fee and lieu, it's like so someone can just buy their way out, you know, of their sins, so to speak, right? Um, there is a built-in kind of savings for people doing it themselves, uh, or, you know, having it contracted out to actually do the offset on site, and that's it, there's this thirty percent um, solar tax credit um, from the feds. And so um, you can essentially reduce um, somewhat significantly the cost of putting in the solar, if you do it yourself, as opposed to we're going to charge a full cost in a fee in lieu situation. Big sense?
It's cheaper to put the solar on, but at some point with a commercial project, there's not enough real estate to do all the solar, so you, so that that, that pulls the project back into something reasonable where you can actually, you know, you have site constrictions.
I think my well, I think my concern with this program, the way it is right now, is that we're basically not reducing, we're just we're not reducing our consumption, we're just
Charging for it.
Offsetting it, and I think the way we'd like to go is to reduce the consumption as well. I mean, of course, we want to opt for that, what we're using, but we're still allowing people to do landscaping or do EV chargers in order to heat you know, to have snowmelt of two thousand square feet. I think we could do better than that. I mean, I think, I think this is one way to move forward, but I'm just a little uncomfortable with, with this negative point hoping that the negative point system, and I guess it's not hoping, I know you're saying that
It is layered, so, so the, the mitigation requirements is, is still there, no matter the size of the system, you're just layering an additional negative point, so it's not that you can get your way out of this with an EV charger. It's that you mitigate it, potentially pay a fee in lieu and install your EV charger. So, we could back out of the negative points, but we felt like that was another
No, 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 I do not, I, I want the negative.
You could change the negative points though, to be, make them more severe.
I mean, yeah, it just seems like negative three points for twenty-five hundred square feet, or just under twenty-five hundred square feet of outdoor heated space at a residence just seems like so much. I feel like we should be holding ourselves to a higher standard than that.
Kelly, would you suggest keeping the increments at five hundred instead of making that third point, you have a thousand to twenty-five hundred or?
I, that's a great suggestion. I think, I mean, I do think either more points or a hard cap is probably what I would prefer.
Carol, I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Mark told us earlier was how the points work now, it's up till five hundred, one point. The next five hundred, another point, then the next fifteen hundred is one point, so reducing um, breaking it up to stay consistent every five hundred feet is a point.
Well, keep it a five hundred, don't jump to fifteen.
And you, would you want to make any difference for the commercial? I think we had a different threshold, didn't we, for the commercial?
Uh, just um that ramp applies up to five thousand square feet, and then the negative points start getting layered on after five thousand in five hundred square foot increments. I think I think I'm hearing this. Between the two of us, we'll figure it out.
You don't?
No, no, I do.
People that be able to put whatever they
No, no.
With that, what about commercial?
Yeah, should we, should we elevate the mitigation requirements? We're kind of leveraging that mitigation, so like if, if they mitigate what they're doing and then a little extra so that that can be applied to like Alta Verde to get some efficiencies there? Do you kind of ramp it up a little bit, escalate the the offsetting to more than a hundred percent?
So we, so we get into some uncomfortable situations, because in order to do a fee, we have to have some kind of nexus for what we're charging that fee for. And the, the nexus that we have right now is the cost to install solar, and so it's so, we, we don't recommend, and I'll look to Kirsten to say we can't do, perhaps, um above a hundred percent in this case, because we can't justify, we don't have a like, we're not using a social cost of carbon or some number that we can base that fee on, we're basing it on what it would cost you to install solar, and that's a very market-driven real tangible number. So as much as I would love to say, like, let's go to a hundred and fifty percent fee, like, we don't justifiably have a number
Right.
A cost to base that on.
Right. Road a year from now, should we look at the social cost of carbon to escalate that?
You know, as that becomes a more standard metric, and I, I know the state of Colorado is looking at how to formalize that. As that becomes a more standard metric, we can certainly look at that.
Cool, yeah, maybe that's the progression here. Thanks.
Jesse, maybe not now, but before this comes back to us, I'd like to understand what is our flexibility with the fee and move? How can we leverage those funds? Where can we use it and what are the parameters?
Are you looking for recommendations or literally what we can use it on?
Understand what are the parameters for initiatives we can use those funds for.
I believe we can reinvest them into energy projects as, as as desired. I mean, sorry, go ahead, I don't want to.
So do we have a dra- you haven't shared a draft with me yet about how we do need to restrict the money. Um, and it needs to be related to the goals. Um, I think until I work with Jesse, I don't really have any answer on specifics, but, but there are restrictions on funds that are used. I'm sorry, restrictions on fees imposed in this manner, yes, and we probably have to have a separate fund.
And the i- and the idea is that you're, you know, you're, you are using this for energy efficiency. We heard loud and clear the electrification incentives during the last conversation. So, uh, you know, taking this money and putting it back into community projects to achieve all of our other greenhouse gas reduction goals. Um, that is how it's been commonly used in other communities, particularly, some communities have even been so specific as to target like um, public projects like solar on schools or solar on, you know, churches and other types of public buildings, but um I think broadly speaking, energy efficiency and electrification, anything under that climate action strategy piece is what we're, how we'd like to try and design it and work with Kirsten on how to do that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, next.
Okay, so the gas appliance piece, um Okay, so the gas appliance piece um. So this this started out with the stakeholders. It's a conversation around natural gas fire pits, but we're seeing all kinds of gas appliances outside from fire pits to fireplaces to gas ranges, kitchens and you you name it. So we're trying to think of a way to to come up with a common denominator for those types of appliances. And so um uh Rick Fout has done some research with some of our local businesses and installers of natural gas fire pits and other types of appliances. And they came up with a two hundred thousand BTU. Uh I'll call it common denominator. So that's the size of the appliance to be installed. And so the stakeholders had recommended allow for one natural gas fire pit. Don't require mitigation offset and go from there. Um we heard from you guys, you wanted to potentially cap that or make the offset requirement higher. There were there were a bunch of ideas. And so this was how we tried to narrow this down. So what we're proposing is that you can have one appliance of your choice. Whatever your choice is, that is up to two hundred thousand views in size. That would be a ten percent mitigation requirement. Anything above two hundred thousand is a hundred percent mitigation requirement on that appliance. So it gives you choice in design, choice in appliance. There's a common denominator in size and then anything above that, you're getting a hundred percent offset. Um and I just hearken back to one of our roundtables when we showed the calculation of one natural gas fire pit to the group. And when it spit out the number, they said, oh, my God, no one will ever put one of those in.
What a bummer.
And we said, that's the point. So so I do think that that price tag on there is effective. Um but the two thousand, two hundred thousand BTU level will allow people for some choice in whatever they want to start with.
Fire pits, not like a range topping, but out but outdoor ranges and stuff too.
Yeah, right, right.
Even even though they're really different.
Yeah.
Yeah. Gets turned on and gets left on for hours on end where
So the background calculations, the the engineering group that's done the calculator said that they can they can build the calculator that that can accommodate the uh assumption on the use cases for those. So two hundred thousand BTU is sort of the the appliance type or the size, but the actual use of those can be built into the assumptions. Does that help?
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
Did we ever add the um the requirement of timers on these?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Great.
There's also negative points if you exceed the two hundred thousand.
Excellent.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. So are you guys?
Highway will torpedo your project.
Yes, exactly.
What you gonna say?
Well, I just think it's crazy that we're having this discussion about two hundred thousand BTUs and three hundred thousand BTUs when we're also talking about an Excel pipeline that's going to cost a hundred and sixty four million dollars because we need more natural gas. I mean, I just don't. This is a very hard discussion for me to get through and take seriously when when we have, when there are much bigger issues that we should be discussing. I I mean, I don't. Yeah, I don't feel comfortable with.
It's really difficult for us to at the moment to to oppose Nat uh Excel's natural gas pipeline when we don't have policies in place that mitigate natural gas today. So this is almost like a step towards getting us to a place where we can actively oppose with a straight face that we're doing something in town to change, to make that change.
Not doing enough.
Yeah, so you could, would you feel comfortable saying like, well, everyone is, well, people who are installing outdoor fireplaces in Summit County um are doing two thou- two hundred thousand BTUs. And so we just went with that. I mean, should we? Should we be making them smaller? Should we? Should we go with what the norm is? Is that good enough for us?
Well, this is based on our sort of, like, based on local market survey, that is the, that's why we chose that number. Is because that's what's on the market.
Well, I guess that's my point is like, should we be meeting market standards or should we be doing better? You know where Jesse and I stand.
I mean, then honestly, the next iteration or the next step of this is a is in I'm gonna say it. Here it is. It's the it's no natural gas for new construction, period. As a policy, not just a or as a as part of the code, not just a policy.
Even for everything. That's a beat just did it. The people that cook, can you is is like a range top? Is that as good as natural? You know, like for like in restaurants, there's always natural gas, but can you do everything with a range top?
Yeah, indu- induction cooktops are awesome.
Yeah. I could ask. So it's not on or a son.
I mean, this is hijacking the conversation, but you know, so are people okay with this? And then we'll do Jesse's next step or do we? Well, sorry to put it that way.
Well, it's gonna have a conversation pretty soon because XL wants to get this thing done. And I mean, I don't know if it's a pose or just we just won't go to the PUC and support it.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe have that as a an alternate alternate discussion, but maybe we can just move forward on the ramp piece so that Jesse and Kirsten can craft an ordinance to bring back to you.
I think you should start crafting an ordinance. And let us think about these numbers.
Okay.
Because maybe there needs to be negative points immediately.
Okay.
Maybe that's the solution is to, because in this may be a bit of a broad assumption. But the more majority of places that want residentially, one with a lot of snowmelt and a lot of outdoor gas are not people that live here. There are second, there are second homes. Uh like I said, that's a broad assumption, but it's probably fairly true that a lot of people that live in the community do not have would not build a house with a ton of snowmelt and a ton of.
You know what would do the same thing is starting it immediately is to not allow the exemption. They could still do it for safety reasons. They would just have to pay. They would start immediately.
Are you talking about for the commercial piece?
Yeah.
Commercial piece is a pretty small piece compared to the rest of it, though. I you you talk about, I know it's a big number, though, but when you think about, you know, thousands of square feet for a commercial, you eat that up with four homes. Four homes that do twenty five hundred square feet will eat up whatever commercial are gonna do anyway. So I think our problem's more with residential than it is with commercial.
I think it's both, but.
Because we only have a few more big commercial projects.
Well, we're gonna have redevelopment, Eric. We're gonna have a lot of redevelopment.
They're gonna.
Over the years.
Listen, we were gonna have a huge snowmelt piece at Main Street Station originally, and they valued engineered that thing right out when it came down to it. So
Mayor.
Commercial that gets.
Um how about if we schedule another work session? Jesse and Mark can come back maybe with the kind of full tenants of what might be in the ramp ordinance. And you can have some time to discuss this piece as well as look, kind of a reminder and look back on what will be in the ordinance so that when we bring it to you, it'll be.
Okay, that's a great idea. Sorry to delay it a bit.
I'd like to have some info on the thought of just banning all gas appliances, like like Kelly was saying, I don't know, that's.
You got your water bottles. Now you're gonna go after this, huh?
Yeah. Your windmill.
Okay. Awesome. Um yeah, great work. I know this is hard. Uh creative arts strategy discussion.
Three minute break.
Yeah, we're gonna take three minutes while you guys get set up.
At rank.
We had to ask first.
All right, we have Brett Create Arts, Brett Creative Arts Strategy Discussion.
Mayor and Council, I'm Tamara Nutsachi Park, CEO and President of Brett Create, and I'm here today with our Board Chair, Martin Engels. And I'll let him take it from here.
Very good. Nice to be everybody is in fact, in total, we have five Brett Create Board Members here today. So we're well represented. Tamara and I are here to answer questions from you based on the document that she sent out. But I'd just like to give some introductory comments, which I think some people are interested in. The board is very proud of what has been achieved over the last three years. I think we're in pretty good shape organizationally, and I would not have said that even six months ago. The board thinks very highly of camera. We have a great board populated with talented individuals, and we leverage other outside talent to help us on the development and public arts committees. We have world-class governance. Your two town reps at the moment, that's Rick and Todd, get to see and hear everything. We are pleased with the relationship we have with the town. And thank you for your support. It's very important to us. Our draft plans upon which the document were was based. I was using up our reserves, and I know that's been a little contentious topic. And that's from the government pandemic funds. We're going to hit our target reserve number by the end of 2025. So we need to find other actions to put us on a different financial path from there. So we've got a bit of time. But we also recognize action is required. By the way, for your understanding, we do not hold any reserves against what the town funds. We consider you to be reliable. Our reserves are held against the riskier other part of our budget. And just to give you the context, our total budget is about three and a half million. The town provides 2.1, and of that 1.2 million is for facilities. As part of our planning process, we did a financial analysis of 2019 to 2023 budget, which everybody seems to be doing at the moment, going back to 2019. Anyway, this showed that the merger of Brett Music and Brett Create has worked. We have a more efficient model to deliver the arts in Breckenridge, which I think is very, very good progress and something which was a little unsettling for a long time. But the data is saying this thing is actually working. So with that, why don't I hand it over to Tamara?
Great. Thank you, Martin. Martin has been an extraordinary partner as a homeowner on Peak Seven and in the C-suite of Ford Motor Company, he managed the Firestone tire crisis. So it's been really fun to work with him through our, our little crises here in Breckenridge. So thank you to all the board members in the room and to Todd, especially for your participation in this planning process so far and bringing so many comments from the council for us to marinate on. So presuming everybody has read the memo, we'd just like to go section by section and answer your questions and take some feedback. Those are pages 151 through 155 in your packet. So I will just go ahead and kick it off with the organizational positioning. In reviewing this section and the appendix, which really specifies our mission and purpose. Question is, you know, do you believe Brett Creates current organizational positioning is directionally correct?
I think Todd can speak to that, but.
Why don't you start?
Yeah, and I guess in what? What chunk do you want us to look at there?
Just, just.
What specific questions do you guys have for us to weigh in on from that, from that layer?
Just mission and vision is that, you know, and our target audiences as listed on the appendix A on page 155. Does that feel like the right set of people that we should be prioritizing in our programs and those who we serve?
Well, I'll just speak to the fact that I love the fact that you guys said nearly half of Brett Creates patron base are primary residents in Breck. I know that's tricky for you guys because you need the outside people to be able to make money and you need to have, you know, have a draw like Biffa for big donors. I do understand it's a very fine balance, but I think you've done a terrific job, you know, working towards that balance. And I, of course, really love the residence part of that. So thank you for that.
I mean, to add, as you're very much aware, we are no longer trying to bring people in from the front range. We're not advertising down there. We're not pushing that whatsoever. If they've decided to come, so be it, then we'll look after them. But we're looking around the Summit County area. And I don't know, there's also been concerns of doing stuff outside of Breckenridge. Not, I don't know, 95% of what we do, we actually do right here. But there are occasions where we may need to go outside for development reasons, right? Many of our biggest donors don't actually live in town. And we need to stroke them every so often. They give us a lot of money which we need.
Be like a, one of the questions, I guess, for us to weigh in on is, you know, I know there's been discussion about the air stage going to other parts of the county or maybe even other parts of the state. And it's like, conceptually, you know, are we comfortable with that? And, 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 you know, how do we align like our goals there with the air stage with what you're hoping to accomplish? And is there give and take there? Like, is it okay for the air stage to, from our perspective, leave, leave the upper blue?
You know, I would say as they have been at airing on the side of locally. If strategically, you need to kind of stroke the fan, stroke the donors to go someplace else. I would, I would agree with it on a limited basis, you know, but I think that air stage is such a, a local attraction and it's appreciated by the community. And I think it just kind of spreads the goodwill and also kind of, you know, educates, educates those that here too far might not be too aware of BCA of what it does. So, yeah, I mean, I think, I think, and selectively, I'd say we could, you could, you know, bleed out to the other parts of the, of the county. But I'll, I'll say again selectively.
I think that's definitely what's occurred. And I do, I will say that, you know, one of the, not only does it say Breckenridge on it, which I think is really, you know, getting the word out and showing people a really cool thing that comes to meet you where you are. But also some of the, some of the programming that's been outside of the community for that has been like for kids, for teaching. So I think Tamara's done a really good job of kind of, you know, really being selective about only putting that in places where the programming is just right, or the visibility is, you know, key for, for the organization and for the town of Breckenridge.
I agree with the comments of, you know, on a limited basis, that's fine. I just, I would like to see us prioritize Breckenridge events. You know, maybe, you know, really as a piece of your involvement with SEPA and with the Events Committee. You know, ensure that, you know, weekends or days you're planning or you're considering going elsewhere is to really see what events are here in town. And, and is there a place for the air stage to be a part of that event and really collaborate with our local events?
I would actually say that is our philosophy. Agree?
Yes, yes. And, and it's great if we are just delighted that that has kind of become a centerpiece and such community ownership around it. And our, our target really is around, around those block parties. And we're excited about air stage summer opera and, and really kind of continuing to, to use it to celebrate the culture here. The, when we do go out, it like Kelly said, we take, we really focus in on visibility and education and workforce, serving the workforce in particular.
But there might be an occasion which we've had where a private operation, right, who are important to us. They pay the full price for it. And if we can accommodate them, and again, hopefully in the end they become sponsors.
Yeah. And hopefully if we've got concerns here on, on some of that usage that we, we bring it to you early and, you know, get it out there in front of you. One of the things I absolutely love is the work you've done with trying to get something going, you know, on the critical childcare needs. I think that's just fantastic to try and get, you know, basically a test pilot case going there. Cause that's, you know, to me, it's bringing locals into the arts district and trying to get that usage ramped up. So kudos to you and to John for working hard on, you know, sorting some of that out. I think that's a really neat layer that I think, you know, is just super important. It's a critical need and what a great way to bring arts to our community. So I love that. One of the questions that's come up, just kind of been passing with a couple of the, the council here, and I know we've chatted about is, you know, what vision on, on music do we want to see, you know, as far as the acts? And does the town want to invest more in some of the acts that are here to get like higher caliber musicians and maybe some different type performances at the Riverwalk? And is that an investment we want to make? And, you know, maybe that's a question for us to ponder here this spring.
Absolutely. And that kind of ties into one of our key takeaways, number six in the memo. It's a pretty complex business.
The really big names, we can't make any financial sense of it. So the, the answer is, yeah, I'd, I'd love to see. I've guessed the one around all the time, Taylor Swift here. I don't know. But I assure, I assure you, we could never make any sense of it.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Now, I mean, you're so right. It's changed with Dylan, but the amphitheater changed everything. So I'd love to see more moth radio, I, you know, those type non-musical type things, which we dabbled in a little. And, you know, that could be our niche. Yeah.
Yeah, we are, we are dabbling. Last week we dabbled in, in dance a little bit too. And so we're really kind of working with our development committee to see, you know, what kind of philanthropy we might be able to build around to help build the, the Performing Arts Center model, which is what we call a more speaker series, dance, circ, mute plus music and do what we can in music. And also the, you know, there are other programming strategies that we can, you know, consider deploying that do the same thing, that provide really cool opportunities for, for locals and visitors who are already here, but may not have the level of risk or require the level of subsidy that popular music is, is demanding.
One of the other layers for us to kind of look at over time, and I know you and your team are working on this, is when we look at the subsidy, the, the town, the check, the town's cut into BCA, one of the big things to consider in there is a huge chunk of that's going to facilities. And, and I believe the plan is to work on splitting that out. So we've got a real clear understanding of like, hey, here's the investment in the facilities. And then here's the, here's kind of the real investment in the arts, because that number, it looks a lot differently when you pull out the, the, the facilities piece. And then the other layer to think about, that's just been interesting learning, and thank you for your patience, getting me up to speed on all this, has been, you know, quite a lot of our, our usage in our town arts facilities is kind of already locked in and programmed. When you think about, you know, the ability to, to, to bring in acts, say in the summer to the Riverwalk. Well, we've got, you know, a wonderful organization that's, that's providing services there. So there's, you know, the, the usable nights is, is less than, it's not 365 for, for BCA to come in and bring in this program. So, so we're not only making an investment in facilities, but we're also making, you know, a big investment in our resident companies. It's not really quantified, if that makes sense, on usage of those facilities.
Do you have any sense of the, of the 2.1, what, what percentage of that is facilities?
1.2 is what she said at the start of her.
Oh, 1.2.
I think that was maybe like something that I had written down on this was, you know, seeing that 83% of our funding goes to facilities. And I know those facilities are utilized with classes and, and, you know, there's, there's things happening, there is programming. But is there a way or is there a desire to, to look for a way of providing more higher profile usage of the facilities and bring, and again, this is, I, I look at what goes to Main Street Station, whether it's a wine classic or things that go to Beaver Run parking lot and going, oh, why can't we bring that focus to our arts district? And use that to bring, to make it more high profile. So it's not, you know, five kids making pottery, you know, which is great and super important. But after that's done, we're bringing an event and having, inviting our guests as well as our residents into that campus. And if that's something that you've thought of and how that's worked out. Trying to think of the event that we were at last year that kind of did that a little bit and it was spectacular. And there's a great feeling because it is such a wonderful package of a campus. And perhaps utilize that a little bit more.
On to the art, the 83% goes beyond facilities. It goes into how much of the organization, including people and other services, to take care of the resident companies.
Right. It's actually 83% of the 1.2 million dollars. And that's based off of our Brett Creates usage versus other community users and rentals. So to answer your question, there are, there are a lot of things that, and programs that Brett Create has tried over, over the course of its almost 10-year life right now. And so in the coming out of COVID and with this financial gap that we are, you know, attempting to close right now, our main focus is really on the three key elements in those plan highlights. And that's revenue driving initiatives, responses to critical community needs, and then alignment around town and community values and initiatives. And so when we have big outdoor spectacle type events, they're often free and require, and there's less revenue potential. And so really coming out of, of this period of transition, our focus has been really on developing the programs that are going to return, be the greatest return on investment in terms of hitting that animation goal, but also finding outside sources of revenue. So, you know, I think the air stage summer operates as an animation component. I'd be curious, was it Mountain Town 2030 that you were referencing or?
Now, but I guess, you know, one of the things that, one of the last times that we spoke was that you were looking at doing, producing less and being more of a person that brought in a producer, a promoter. And, you know, for, for those events that I keep on the Main Street Station, but, you know, where they're not doing, they're not, they're just collecting the site fee and they're letting someone come in and run an event. And if that was of any desire.
Yes, absolutely. I think that was one of the, the key ideas that came up from the Special Purpose Task Force that we worked with is how can we leverage the facilities to really build a clientele of rentals that will return year after year? And what resources do we need in order to support that and go out and solicit potential candidates and producers in that area? You know, like the Events Committee, we would certainly want those to fit within, you know, the scope of our, our values and the goals of, of the town's Event Committee in particular. But that is a key tactic in the plan is, you know, finding where those rental possibilities are, both in the Riverwalk Center and on the Arts District Campus. But those studio spaces also have very specific uses. So it's a very specific client clientele that we would be looking at. So yes, we are, those are early developments, but it is a way that we see developing the area.
Jay, back, back in the teens, in the 20, you know, 19 and even prior, you know, the town, one of the reasons a lot of those alcohol related, you know, the wine, the beer, the whiskey, the, all of those events that tend to be on private property in Main Street Station or Beaver Run. The reason they're there is that the community and, and the Events Committee made a strategic decision to limit the number of alcohol focused. You know, not alcohol related, but alcohol focused events on town property. Because we, the, the community, we got a lot of input from the community that we, we just had too many of them. And not eliminate, but just, just reduce and, and don't add new. So, you know.
And I'm just talking even like those arts, art fairs that usually happen in East Sawmill of, you know, been in those to come up and.
Fundamentally, I'm 100% with you. I mean, the war and I love the, the operate because that, that's alcohol's part of it, but it's not focused on it, you know? And, and, you know, getting more animation in there and, and, and kind of what Jay's saying, and I totally agree, is to, to get more, more people in there and show them how cool it is and everything else. So, sorry, sorry.
Running out of time. What else do you need from us? What else do you want to hear from us tonight?
I, I think that we have gotten what we need. You know where to find us. And we are always open to sharing the work that we do. I mean, to, to Dick's point, you know, our, our goal is really to provide things to do for our locals and visitors who are already here. That's an alternative to, to outdoor life, to the bar, you know, to drinking in the bars or whatever it may be. So that we have a little something for everyone here in Breckenridge. And so we're really honored to do that work and to manage the beautiful cultural facilities that the town has invested in. If we have a minute, I'd love to share our new website if, if we can build it up and just that this also, you know, one of our goals in this website was to and clearly communicate our, our purpose. It's a moving picture. Yes, please. That would be great.
Oh, there's a unicorn.
So one of the most complicated and what the town's investment goes into is not only service, the physical buildings, but also the services for partners to use the building, specifically ticketing. And that is no small undertaking. So the most robust part of this website is our calendar. We have a couple of, we have, well, I can't seem to. We have a couple of. There we go. Of wonderful things coming up. And here you can see all of our Riverwalk shows. In 2023, we anticipate between 17 and 20 shows that we host a mix of, of music and also spoken word and some other entertaining holiday items that we'll bring up. We'll celebrate the 30th anniversary of, of the, of the Riverwalk Center with a kind of hootenanny, asleep at the wheel event. And we have, this is where we can showcase all of our upcoming exhibitions, classes, workshops in different ways. You can see just how robust all of this programming is in, in Old Masonic Hall, as well as some of the special initiatives that we have. You can see these calendar options by the type now of, of offering that we have and as well as all of our signature events. So this is quite an undertaking. You can see these are the, the items that build our brand as an arts community, as well as just ways to explore our different community events, all of the education that we offer for different audiences and what we have available and how you can help support all of those happenings. Um, so I think, you know, the event calendar is super cool. We are able to filter. You can see not all of the repetitive offerings are listed under here, so it's not a cluttery.
On the event days, do you, um, promote any of the partner or organizations events?
On the calendar, everybody that we ticket. Um, so you have, in order to be on this calendar, you have to utilize the audience view and ticketing um, opportunity and services that we provide through the town's generous underwriting. Um, but you can also see we've had an opportunity for these partner oper, so you can, um, sort by resident company and see what they have to offer. Um, you can sort by the kind of, uh, performance or activity you want to do. And you can see it all comes up and you can, yeah, there's lots you can do. Get in there, play around, send me your feedback. Events calendar, we developed a very specific API. I don't know what that is, but it is. It translates, uh, basically our event calendar and pulls it into BTO and then subsequently all of the other lodging companies who utilize that calendar.
That's great.
Wanted.
Well, to break it down into appendix A, it illustrates the incredible amount of work that you guys have done in the last year and it's a high level document. It points to resident values. It talks about the programming, so just thank you. I know there was a ton of work behind that.
Thank you.
Important for the council to know the amount of work that Tamara and her staff have put in and certainly the board, like everybody's working hard here to pivot and evolve and, and really, yeah, kind of champion the arts here in Breckenridge. And so, yeah, just thank you for all the hard work and, and it's appreciated and noted.
Okay, we're right here. Yeah.
Thank you.
There's been an obvious change from up here in how this whole organization has operated and, and what you bring to the community from, you know, when I got elected seven years ago, there was some real public outcry about wasted space. And I mean, it was really, it was a thing on the street. The people were not happy. This is, when I don't hear stuff, that makes me happy. So, thank you. Thank you for all the hard work. I know I, you know, everything that I've been to is just, it's professionally done. It's exciting. Um, so thanks both of you for the hard work. It's gonna be awesome.
I'm a Swifty.
Okay, I know you are.
I'm not surprised.
Uh, roll out of a social equity blueprint and equity lens.
And town council, uh, officially nice to meet you. My name is Mac Russo. I am the Community Outreach and Engagement Liaison. And within my position, there's a specific emphasis around social equity, which is what we're here to talk about today. Uh, included in your packet is a brief overview of the Equity Blueprint, the lens and the implementation strategy for the lens. As noted in the memo, these are tools that we're going to be used to identify inequities that exist within our policies, practices and programs and remedy them in future decision-making. Uh, first note is that the Equity Blueprint, uh, is moving closer to the publication. There's two components of it, an internal and community-based side. The internal side is being currently worked on. We have a internal equity committee comprised of town employees that will be formed. The email for this committee will go out to all staff tomorrow uh, with the application for them to get involved in. And then the community side is implemented through our Breckenridge Social Advisory, wow, Social Equity Advisory Commission. Um, their subcommittees this month are going to be working on refining the proposed change to the goals that were included in the memo. In hopes that it will be finalized by April seventeenth, so that the external component can be published on their part of the website. Second, the Equity Lens is just starting the in, or in the start phase of the implementation plan. Senior leadership just received a condensed version of the training and you'll see coming up a request for council to set up time to go through the training as well. And any questions?
Cool. Questions?
Just to highlight, this is that high level overview to update the council because other than the committee updates, we haven't really dived in and Mac has done an incredible job starting to amplify this work within the town. Um, Dina has done an incredible job. Shannon, I mean, there's been a lot of work on the internal side. And then the external side, when we first formed the commission and Dick, you'll remember when we interviewed the first commissioners, again and again, it came up like, what are your goals? Our response was, we want to have the goals come from the commissioner. So, um, when we talk about the external goals from the blueprint, that's very much commissioner driven and, um, we'll be rolling out that full blueprint to council in the coming months.
Cool.
This looks great.
Coming a long way and Matt, great document. This is, this is outstanding. It's fantastic.
Really cool. Other questions, comments? Nice work.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Trying to be as quick as possible.
No, well done. Well done. All right, pose twenty twenty-three joint trailhead projects.
This would be quick, right?
We're, it's five, five minutes maybe. Halsey and Teddy were coming down here too. I thought they were bringing the muscle.
Hello again, mayor and council. I wanted to start off with just a brief introduction and also just introduce some of the folks that we have with us today. Uh, the question came up earlier, why these particular three projects? And usually there is some need that rises to the level of importance. We have the Brown's Gulch, the Riley and Dredge and the Loryum Projects in your packet today. And Brown's Gulch, um, is really the culmination of our Swan River Restoration efforts. Collectively, the town and the county have invested about four million dollars in this project, trying to restore, uh, that system to something natural and re, um, reinvigorate the fishery that was once there. You know, we have a lot of anglers and we want to be able to provide safe access for them. The Riley and Dredge project arose really as we were looking to advance our access and inclusion goals and then working with the Social Equity Advisory Commission, looking at the Riley and Dredge Trail and identifying that need for a specific ADA parking area. And then the Loryum, uh, Trailhead Project is a result of a lot of, uh, let's call it upset snowplow drivers, frustrated snowplow drivers on the county, trying to plow that road which has such a crazy grade. A lot of calls from the sheriff's office, uh, responding to cars sliding into each other, very kind of unsafe condition. So, that's really why these three projects are coming before you today. But I do want to introduce some of our partners involved in this. All three of these projects are on jointly owned land with the county. Um, we're grateful to have Jordan Mead, who is a resource specialist with Summit County Open Space. Um, fabulous partner of ours and he's been managing that Swan River project as well. So, great resource for that. And Jamie Overmeyer from the Breckenridge Outdoor Education Center. She's been an amazing resource for us as we're trying to navigate and figure out how we can be more accessible in our open space. So, grateful to have her with us as well and a great resource on that Riley and Dredge project. Um, we have a lot of BOSAC members here and then all three of these projects have had a lot of input and help from Chris McGinnis, our engineer, and so grateful for his engineering mind on, and site planning on all of these. And, um, if you haven't met our staff, Tony Overlock, we have Sarah Hickman and also Joel Dukes is also with us today. So, we're happy to answer, um, any questions and I'll turn it over to Tony.
Well, thanks, Anne. I think, yeah, we could just open up for questions and you guys can choose which project you like.
Let's take them one at a time.
Yeah.
Okay, and let's go ahead and start with the Browns Gulch. Questions? You have comments though?
I have comments.
All right, go to it.
I don't think it's needed. I think there's, there's plenty of parking. There's more than enough parking right now. I love what they've done to the river. Uh, I think I sent you guys a video a few weeks ago. Um, there's two parking lots that, that, uh, I've been, people have been using for years. That's plowed, that's flat. Um, one, I was just saying yesterday, day before yesterday, and there was four cars and I kind of counted that you could probably fit six or seven more cars there in, as is, and then down the road a half mile it looked like it could be maybe twenty or thirty cars there. Um, I know the concern is that technically, um, there is not parking allowed on county roads. But this is, I, I think it would be a lot easier and more sensible to formalize, uh, those two parking lots that are plowed in that, you know, I bet I've skied Brown's Gulch literally ten, fifteen times this winter. I've never seen more, I've never seen the, the, the smaller parking lot full at all. And, uh, and then if you go to the lower parking lot, which is right kind of, uh, right by a kind of Rock Island Gulch Road, that is, that is huge and that is that sometimes I'll see people parking there because they don't want to take their dog across the road. But that takes you right to, uh, Rock Island Gulch Road where you can access, uh, the Galena, uh, Galena Ditch Trail. So, yeah, I don't, I, I, I don't see why we'd do this. Um, and I, I'm, I'm very, always reticent to expand a parking lot unnecessarily, uh, because I think it just, it's just, one, it's, it's not cost effective. Two, it, it kind of nature abhors and trailheads abhor a vacuum. And if we don't, if, if it's not broke, don't fix it.
And do you expect it to see greater activity in spring, summer and fall than you do in the winter? And what activity have you noticed or have you witnessed there?
And, and I, I may put Jordan on the spot here, um, if he's willing, um, but anglers especially are very, very anxious to fish that new stretch of the newly restored river. And so we are anticipating that and the county did install a trail kind of from that proposed trailhead area, thinking the, the safe access for folks. Um, I chatted with Catherine King, the Open Space Director at the county this morning. I know she's had some conversations with the special ops at the sheriff's office who really respond to a lot of our backcountry issues. They have a lot of concerns, um, with the pull-off on the road is actually in kind of that blind curve of, of Tiger Road and they have a lot of concerns with parking there, but I'm gonna turn this over to Jordan.
Hi, Jordan. Hi, Mayor Council. Thank you for your time. Um, as Anne mentioned, I've been the lead resource specialist on the Swan River Restoration for about the last three years. And I've been spending a lot of time as we've had active work going on on Reach B. And in the summer, the use patterns are very different than, than what Jeffrey's describing, um, in the wintertime. And basically every time that I went, uh, to the Swan River, I found it very difficult to find parking at the Tiger Trailhead at the Rock Island Pull-Off. Those are very popular areas for motorized users and especially the Rock Island Pull-Off because it invites people to have a wider swing and be able to turn around easily. And so that's one of the primary areas where we're seeing motorized use and I would say generally there's maybe two or three spots for non-motorized users to u- utilize the Rock Island, uh, pull-off in the summertime. And the, the Tiger Trailhead motorized area is always overflowing during the summer. And moving down the road towards that pull-off at Muggins Gulch, that's from my measurements on the GIS and from being out there on the ground, it's about an eighty, uh, foot long parking area. So it, you could fit about eight vehicles in there and that's if they all park in head in. And from most of my observations, people are parallel parking there to avoid needing to back out into a blind corner onto Tiger Road. So, in reality, we're, I'm usually seeing two or three cars parked there at a maximum. And more importantly, often one motorized user with a trailer will pull into that pull-off and then it's basically completely full. And basically, and what I'm seeing is on any day, weekdays or weekends, between five and ten vehicles parked on the shoulders of Tiger Road on either side, along the bucking rail on Rej of the Swan River to access for angling because there's not adequate parking, uh, along the road in this area. So, to speak to that point, um, that's where I saw the need, uh, for this, uh, parking area.
Ju- just to be clear, okay, there's two parking areas that I'm talking about. One is right by Brown's Gulch, the, the kiosk, the trailhead. And then, then a half, and when you, is that what you call Muggins Gulch?
Pull-off that's directly across from the gate.
On the north side of the road?
The north side, I believe so, yes.
As you head towards Tiger Run, that'd be the left. That's the north.
Yep.
Okay, so that's what you say, that's what you define as Muggins Gulch?
I'm speaking to the, the, just the roadside pull-off that would be on the left as you're heading up Tiger Road towards the Swan River.
And, and then the other one, you call that Rock Island Gulch?
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, yeah, just seeing a lot of motorized users and very limited parking and lots of roadside parking during the summer season on a daily basis. Thank you.
Would there be, uh, would some of these other parking areas be closed then? Or is this in addition to?
Uh, the Open Space Advisory Council did support this project and one of the reasons that they brought up was for public safety specifically. And at, uh, their request, staff is exploring how we could potentially shut down that roadside pull-off. And that's going to eliminate users needing to cross Tiger Road, um, in that location. So, that would be something we would want to explore. I've spoken with our road and bridge folks. There's nothing that they use that pull-off for operationally and they'd be happy to just leave it unplowed in the winter. We could, uh, blockade it off in the summer times seasonally. Um, and again, to address that public safety issue and to move the parking from one side of the road where folks need to cross in order to access the, the terrain they're get, going to in the river and to, to the, the side of the road they actually want to be on and eliminate that crossing. And our sheriff's office, Special Operations Sergeant Mark Watson also mentioned that they respond to several accidents on that corner annually and that, so that is an unsafe corner where people are traveling at speed and there's often, uh, accidents there.
You know, I will say, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm guessing you, we're talking to different people, but I talked to Jamie, the sheriff, and, and I asked him about it and he said, he, he wasn't aware of any complaints as is. Now, that was in the winter. You know, um, so, uh, how many parking spots are you looking at ad to ad?
So, we were proposing a twenty, uh, vehicle spot, twenty vehicles.
And if it's that bad, is that gonna make a, is that gonna make a difference? If you eliminate, if you eliminate the ten right across from Muggins Gulch, uh, right, what I would call right across from Brown's Gulch and then you, so you're talking about an addition of ten cars and not, not considering the one that is at Rock Island Gulch, uh, the, the larger lot at Rock Island Gulch.
How does the size compare of the proposed one at this location compared to B and B? How many spots is that one?
I think the B and B is roughly around forty to fifty spots.
So, double probably.
This would be half the size of that. Um, it's about a hundred by sixty feet.
And so if you look at the aerial photos for this area, people are just parked everywhere, like the Rock Island parking lot, the pull-around, it has, you know, maybe ten cars and trailers in it. There's tons of room in there for more, but they're just parked all along the roads. I guess I'm just, um, are you guys gonna sign it or what is to prevent people from just continuing to park wherever they want and then just having another parking lot?
So, the, the new parking lot would be at a non-motorized parking area. And then you're talking about the Rock Island Gulch area where there's the motorized use parking. In one improvements, we could do some signage in there or fencing to help minimize some of that, but at the same time, then it's a, a management issue of going out there and as well.
Other questions?
Comments?
You guys know how I feel.
Yeah.
I do, um, but you know, this is a democracy, though you have votes twice, but, uh,
Monarchy.
Monarchy, so, yeah.
How's everybody else feel about this?
I mean, to me, it's the beginning of, of the last word you said there is, is this evolution into management, right? And, you know, one of the things in this zone that I don't, I don't think we've really looked at with the county is, is management of motorized use back there and, you know, are we overload? To me, I, I love the idea of, of, you know, you just look at it. It's just beautiful, the restoration, right? So, I'm, I'm excited about some non-motorized use there. The, the bigger question to me is more about, are we overloading that basin with motorized stuff? So, I'm, I'm not alarmed by a parking lot there. I, I like the idea of the fishermen not having to be down at the other end with all the motorized stuff. Um, I like cleaning it up to keep the road a little safer. It, it doesn't, you know, twenty spots doesn't freak me out, but I, I understand your reservations there. But I think that the next step here is really, you know, if we proceed with this, what's that rest of the ecosystem looking like and how do we do better in there? Because, I mean, you just hear motors all summer long and, and is it too much? Is the question.
Well, a lot of it's private business. I mean, we're not, we can't, you know, as far as the, the. Well, a lot of it's private business. I mean, we're not, we can't, you know, as far as the the Swan. I mean, there's businesses that operate, you know, motorized uh use up there as well. So I don't know if that's gonna. That's, I don't know, that's gonna go away.
Tony, when uh maybe I was, you'd already said this and I was trying to get my bearings. With this new spot, would there be efforts made to make it not desirable for trailers? And and that to have it be more hooey angler and whereas like specific?
Yes, it would be signed appropriately and we, you know, it's all a nice key so kiosk with surrounding um. Trail system, a fish and hook waste disposal area. So it would be specifically for anglers and non-motorized use and seasonal.
What tactics can you use to dissuade trailers from just taking up that twenty spots with two trailer or, yeah?
We, we rely on signs.
Really?
Really, what's your real plan?
You know, we would work with the Sheriff's Department on that as well. Yeah.
Couldn't you just make it narrow and very unappealing to people pulling trailers?
Yeah, and I think, you know, as as this progresses and as it moves forward, I think the motorized users would understand that place. You know, I feel like that's happened before in the past where we've closed off Sally Barber Road was once was a motorized road. And now that it's accepted use or going up to Baldi Mountain with snowmobile access, we've closed that off. And it now it's acceptable. And if you did see a snowmobile on there, you know, they would have the department on them. So I think.
It's not, for me, it's not really the use. It's more like last night at Bosec, we talked about Sally Barber. And motorized users pulling in and taking up eight spaces. So I think that's the bigger question is like, if we're gonna build a whole new non-motorized parking lot. It should be designed because we can't really rely on signs and we can't rely on people. So it should be designed so that it's very painful for a trailer to get in and out of there.
Noted. Who would plow it? Would the county plow it? Uh, cause you you couldn't plow it with a a big plow, right? You'd have to use like a pickup truck or something?
Uh, Vic Schroders, the operator who runs the uh Tiger Road and does all the plowing up there, I've spoken to him. And he, he's willing to to plow that lot with, on his regular kind of cleanup route. So it'd be a day or two after the storm.
Other comments? Okay, yes or no?
I'm good with it. Yes.
Dick?
I think I'm good with it.
You're a no?
No.
I'm okay with it.
Okay?
No.
Okay. I'm okay with it only if you do some stuff to get rid of some of this other stuff to really to clean it up. And and Tony, not just signs, you're gonna have to come up with some creative ways to make sure that this is used for the intended purpose. You know, and if you're getting people off the road and you can fix this other parking area so that they can use it more effectively. Then then it will have served its pr- its purpose.
And I do think that, um, you know, boulders or something to really effectively. Make sure that people in the winter aren't just pulling all over because this area, I know it's not totally flat as it's shown. But, you know, it doesn't need to creep every summer or every winter, I'm sorry, because of.
And I will say, my experience is in the winter. Um, I don't go there in the summer.
And I think also just to, I mean, I know there's a pretty decent setback from the river here. But just to make sure that the plowers aren't plowing and pushing and pushing that stuff closer and closer to the river each winter, I think is important. And the fishermen and the restoration guy will appreciate that. Yeah.
To your point, you know, I was on, uh, I think it was my first two years on Upper Blue Planning Commission. When we started the rock crushing operations and getting this started. And it's just such a precious commodity and just, it's so much work went into it. And just to be s- you know, handle it with kick gloves and just really like, it's it's precious. And I think it's a model of things that can be done in the future as well.
Okay, rattling dredge.
All right. Who's got questions?
Will the parking lot be large enough for two wheelchair vans where there's room for the ramp?
Yes, Chris McGinnis designed that for us. So we looked at those specs. Yeah.
Yeah.
And then also have room to back up and then be able to pull out onto the road and not back out onto the road.
We we're just talking about the parking at rattling dredge, you know, the trail.
Let's start with the parking for, well.
Well, we don't have.
Well, part, I mean, there's parking and then there's location of the first part of the trail too. Which is my question is why not utilize the path that's already there that I know is for. It's got the bucking rail fence in front. And you utilize that side of the road as a, you know, as a straight shot pull in where people park now and just designate that. And change that, th- this part of the trail, oddly, I know it's old, but in this fall. Is a fairly special place. It's the very first place in the, in the whole area that gets yellow. It's the first one that everything falls to and it's a pretty narrow trail that you're gonna improve. And it's the one thing I've heard is why not just use the one that's already there that's pretty wide to begin with?
Yeah, and you're talking about the the old mining road grade with the bucking rail in front of it, Eric?
Yeah, the one that just ble- bleeds right into this.
Yeah.
It just goes, yeah.
We looked at that and that has a steeper pitch of any of the grades that we are looking at for that project. You know, even getting up to the rattling charge, it has a steeper pitch coming off the road and fall line straight down. Which I think is a little bit hazardous. I did look at the the trail between the Aspens from with the parking lot to the bridge. It it feels narrow. It really does. And you see a burned line of dirt there. But when you actually start taking measurements and looking at the trees or the spaced out, we might lose maybe just one or two trees to make. To accommodate that path in there.
Yeah, we talked about this trail and I think this lot of all the lots presented, I mean, that's the most important lot, a no brainer. So it's a wheelchair friendly trail, so wheelchair users could access it.
Okay, and then what next?
Yeah, I, the pa- the parking lot was flagged, i- it seems fine for me, to me.
Okay, good with parking lot?
Yeah, thanks for working with BOEC on that.
It's been a pleasure. Yeah.
Well, I want to talk about the bridge.
Okay.
I don't support the bump outs on the bridge. Tonight, I write, I'm on this almost every single day, I'm on this bridge. It's rare you encounter anybody. And if you do, you always stop and let them go. I think it's a lot of money to spend on a bridge that common courtesy. Just get off your bike and back your bike up if that's the issue, you know, I I I feel like most people would allow. Somebody in a, in a wheelchair or with a, with a disability to to go. I I it, I just don't, I think this is a lot of money to spend on this bridge that we don't really need to. I don't know how you feel about that, but yeah.
How much is, um, what?
If the bridge is, uh, would be thirty seven thousand dollars split between the county on that. And we would be creating two uh twenty foot long bump outs that are ten feet wide. Um, and we even feel like this is just a community benefit for everyone, really just to be able to, the bridge is in a beautiful spot, right? Great views, you can actually have a chance to take a break, take some pictures, look down at the water. You're not even including the be of the take a break or rest spot with your wheelchair. And provide that when in a safe passing zone.
And and one of the other things that we've been trying to understand since it's it's a little bit new for us is. All the specs, of course, for for wheelchair friendly trails, but also the the kind of leading movement right now. Is trying to provide as much information at kiosks for folks in wheelchairs to be really empowered to make their own decisions. Um, about whether or not they feel they can, they can tackle the trail, if they can handle the the length, the mileage, that sort of thing. And so I think one of the concerns we have is someone that starts out needs to turn around. It's it's really, really difficult on that very narrow bridge, even if you're in a wheelchair to try and then. If you had to turn around, if you forgot something or you're not comfortable and you want to go back, that that's one of our concerns there from just an accessibility standpoint.
Do you, do you think that's a, do you, do you think people, this trail could be to point where people don't want to do it?
I, that's hard to, hard to say.
Well, I hope not. I mean, if we're gonna build a trail, I'd like, I wouldn't like them to say, oh, you know, after, after thirty, forty feet. Oh, this is too much for us.
Yeah, I'd I'd hate to see that too, but I think there's just a variety of users out there. It's hard to, you know, calculate that.
So would we have to do anything to the bridge if we don't do the bump outs?
When, uh, the bridge is wide enough to accommodate a wheelchair, but not so much for, you know, passers passing by.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear.
I think the bump outs are important and and mainly for the wheelchair users to be able to stop and enjoy the views and stop and see what's there. And and be relaxed in doing so. And I feel like they're holding other people up and everything else. And bringing that equity piece and, you know, we're, we're, I really applaud that we're, we're going down this road and doing some. And Jamie, thanks for your help and uh, you know, I mean, it's, it's uh, this is, it's great to see our community. You know, um, be welcoming in in, you know, um, our open space for wheelchairs. And I think the bump outs are important um for for the, for people in chairs to be able to hang out. And feel comfortable hanging out. So.
Jamie, would you like to share anything?
Please, absolutely.
My expert opinion is, um, I, you know, like, the bump outs are obviously a very nice thing to have, right? Um, it is wide enough to roll the chair through, but it's not just wheelchair users you're talking about. So you're actually looking at a very huge amount of people. So this is not just wheelchair friendly, it's stroller friendly, it's walker friendly, it's all of these other things. And I think, Deck, you nailed it right there when you said that the important part is to be able to stop and enjoy it. Like, yes, it's so easy for, oh crap, someone's coming, I gotta move back this way. Or you have to stop and walk your bike back and that sort of thing, but like, that is very frustrating for somebody. Um, if they were walking across there or rolling across there and encountered a biker who of course would like slam on their brakes and move. That would be very unnerving and that would probably be enough for me to turn around. So, you know, just keeping something like that in mind is, um, I think important to think about. And it's not just necessarily the wheelchair users, a lot of different folks that would probably take advantage of that. Knowing that there is a cool spot to go out and rest. Um, this area was uh interesting to me. Because that is an area that I send people to when they're like, where can I go hiking? Um, because it's nice and wide and the grade's not too bad and it is a short walk or roll to something cool to look at. And that is not something you have in very many areas around here. So to me, that obviously spoke volumes about this area. You know, it's already been used quite a bit. So putting a little additional love into it, I think. Um, elevates it to something that could be very attractive to, um, our folks that come to Breckenridge with disabilities. And, um, even with kids and your parents and your grandparents that come and visit. Um, I took my mother-in-law out there who's seventy-three and uses a a rolling walker. Um, and she got halfway out and needed to take a break. Thank God her walker has a seat in it. Um, but you know what I mean, that's the kind of person we're thinking about is like, every person that lives here whose mom and grandma comes to visit. That's where they're gonna want to go or that's an area that they could go and take their loved one to. So there's not many of those places in Summit County. So it would be nice to have more.
Good question. So what's the width right now?
It's a little over forty inches.
Forty inches. And how long would the bridge be closed?
It would probably be about two weeks.
Well, that's it, okay.
And how long is the bridge?
The bridge is about almost a hundred feet.
Would there be benches on these bump outs?
Jamie asked that same question and I was like, that's a great idea and it may be something we could handle in-house. Cause I think there was, there are ten feet wide bump outs, so it'd be room enough to provide a bench and still have room for passing.
And you're comfortable with the thirty seven thousand?
You know, I think it's a little pricey, but the gentleman.
Thirty seven, I think is, is affordable. It's no, it's not gonna be more than that.
No, it won't be more than that. And the gentleman we're working with has worked with the um, Breck History. Doing the the Sally Barber, he's gonna be doing the Jesse, he's very qualified. I have no, you know, concerns about the quality of work that will be done. What's that?
It's tied to this, so, yeah, he'll kill it. Bosec's paying for this, right? Is this all Bosec or is this county and uh?
County's involved as well. Yeah.
Bosec from our portion.
Uh, other questions?
You know, I could probably sign off on the bridge. Are you totally comfortable? I was just there today. I just skied Turks B and B up, you know, up to the. Side and down extending it. Are you totally comfortable that we can do enough dirt work to make this flat? I uh, I.
The trail itself.
The trail itself. This winter, I was pushing my group, my father-in-law around in a wheelchair. And uh, um, you know, maybe two hundred pound guy. And uh, I just wish I had Jay with me. So, I mean, so this, I mean, from from my anecdotally looking how to get to that dredge. There's a fair amount of relief.
Yep. And that's why, you know, Jeffrey, we're gonna do the best we can with the grades. And and they're not gonna be totally flat. That's impossible to do with any type of terrain that we're dealing with here. We're gonna do the best job we can with those grades and try to minimize, we're gonna create safe rest zones for people to stop, enjoy the view and and take a break. And I feel confident that this will be used and enjoyed by many, many people.
So are we, are you proposing that we pave? Just the, the, the two handicap spots?
So.
The asphalt?
We are, we're going back and forth with recycled asphalt or crush refines in that area for a durable surface.
Okay, and then the trail itself will not be asphalt under any circumstances?
That's correct. It'll be a crush refine trail similar to what goes around the, you know, the Vista Point.
And we'll be losing one tree?
It might be two, Jay, but I agree. I love that. I love that. I love that area too.
You know, he's gonna count there, Tony.
I'm gonna borrow a wheelchair from uh, POEC and have you push my ass and see how that goes. I'll, I'll put there.
Yeah.
Yeah, careful. They might accidentally miss with you. Might end up in the creek.
Put me off the bump up.
Okay, yes or no?
Like to watch those two out there.
I I reluctantly, I like, when this was first proposed, I was not for it. I didn't support it. Um, I do see. Where the merits are and I reluctantly support it.
Carol?
Yes, it aligns with our master plan. We have a great partnership with POEC. It's needed within our trail inventory. Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yeah, no, I'm okay with this. I will, like I said, I will look at this thing once it's done. And uh, and and just.
About it then?
Well, I just wanna, I just wanna make it, you, I mean, this is, I wanna make it user friendly. And, you know, I mean, I don't want, it's, I don't know if you remember the kayak uh park we built? But yeah.
Huh?
We still have it. We still have it. So I just want, I want, if if we're gonna do this, I I want it to be usable. So, yeah, I'm 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 okay with this.
Yeah.
Okay, me too. Um, if for some reason the trail doesn't work out, i- is there the option to go into the dredge? To create a longer, almost like climbing.
Serpentine thing.
Climbing trail, like a switchback almost?
I think there are some options, Eric, that we look into, but I feel pretty confident working with Jamie and their staff. We've walked the trail numerous times and they felt comfortable with it.
Cool. All right. Uh, Lorian? Okay, here, here, I know there are, I know there are problems with, you know, it it being slippery and the grade. There's a huge problem with the way people use that trailhead and that is everybody drives their own car. And I'm just worried that we're just gonna create a parking space in actually really sort of a nice open area this. And you're not gonna change any behavior and I'd rather you change behavior than put this parking area where this is. Like I'd, I'd rather us try to figure some way to fix what's there than cut into this. Cut into this area. It seems to be. It's just, you know, we're just gonna, now everybody can show up with their own car still. I mean, on any day you go out there, there are groups in three and four people and nobody drives their own car, ever. I mean, everybody drives their own car, nobody car pools. And that's a huge bummer and I don't know how you, you know, you fix that.
I don't know either, Eric, but then I agree. Our our first choice is obviously looking at the existing parking lot and how can we fix this? You know, it's already pre disturbed area. We called Chris McGinnis on board and like, Chris, can you come up here and take a look at this? And can we regrade this, add some fill and just make it flatter and nicer? And he was like, well, you know, we're gonna have to regrade the road, build a retaining wall. Um, that's still an option, cause you know, our, our first choice is not to go into an undisturbed area and make a parking lot, so. And I don't know how we change people's behaviors.
Yes.
Signs.
One way you change it is by not, by, well, yeah, signs, but not providing more parking. Because that doesn't, you know, that, I mean, it honestly didn't work at B and B. B and B's twice as big as it should be, and it just gives people the option to not do the right thing, like camp overnight and have bonfires. You know, I mean, it's just, the reality is if you, if you give people too much room for these things, they will just, you know, they'll stay in their normal patterns. I know this is a pain in the ass for the plow drivers. I'd rather you see, I'd rather you spend more money fixing what's there than creating something new.
Yeah.
Just to be, to echo what you're saying, but more to, instead of just the plan, just providing perhaps a solution of sorts is that I've been going to Laram for, in Baldy Trailhead for twenty years. Summer, winter, spring, fall. And it really wasn't until we shut, or the county shut down the Baldy Trailhead down to five spots, that Laram exploded to what we see today on the weekends. And up on Baldy Trailhead, there, there's pavement everywhere. There's a transit stop. There's like, if there was, that would be a place that I'd be very uh, willing to look at expanding parking, cause you know, you used to be able to park up and down that road. Uh, and there'd be thirty cars up there and using that trailhead. And so I just think that maybe there's a happy medium somewhere where, where there's already asphalt. There's already disturbances, already a bus going through. If it was possible for this to be a multi-pronged attack, where yes, maybe we can make the Laram a little bit better. Um, where cars aren't sliding into each other all the time. But also look up at, you know, the Baldy Trailhead and see if there's any solutions up there. Because I think beyond the Green Gate is such a special place, you know? Every time I'm there, I see moose, deer, my dogs, whatever it is. It's just like this beautiful area that is the essence of open space. And to turn that into a parking lot, I think would be criminal.
So, I'm, I'm just gonna say this because I think this is a really important, I know that everybody thinks what, you know, has like an opinion on this, but actually, we can go right back to the master plan that we're about to adopt. And the thing that, I mean, it like checks every box of cultural values, historic resource, historical sites, cultural artifacts, scenic value of undisturbed and iconic view sheds, sense of place emphasizing what's quintessential Breckenridge, wetlands and riparian. So it's like, how did this get through the screening process?
Well, I think Kelly, with the, the master plan, you have the checklist, you have the decision-making framework to go through. But then you have conversations like we're having right now. And what does that really mean? Sure, it might check all the boxes, but you know, as we have a conversation and talk about it, does it really fit?
Yeah.
I think we need to be careful about that. I mean, it feels like, it feels like we, probably the result of that conversation should have said, this isn't the right proposal. Let's find a proposal that doesn't, you know, have so many issues with our screening process. I think that's what I'd like to see in the future.
Jake, great point. I mean, I would love to explore the Baldy Trailhead for more, more access and you know, I lived up there for ten years, you know, just a couple houses away from that trailhead and Emmett Load gets zero traffic. You know, I mean, parking on the road there, I don't see being that impactful. Yeah, Laram, I mean, everyone said, I thought Allison, who wrote the letter, I don't know if you guys read that letter or not, but I thought she, she said it beautifully, you know, I mean, that beyond the gate is such a special area. And you always during the summer, you always see families up there just throwing rocks in that pond and and fascinated with the, with the old buildings and everything else up there. So yeah, I'm with everyone else. I think we do our best to improve what's there.
Yeah, I think we can explore possibilities with Chris, just looking at that existing one and, you know, see what we can do without, you know, a bunch of infrastructure money and time to do somewhat improvements.
I, I think it's better to, I, I would rather you spend money on this than on the other piece. You know, than, than building a new parking lot. And potentially spend more money fixing the old one than less money.
Yeah, I agree. It'd be good to look at some scenarios. And to me, the bigger question, other than these three parking lots is, you know, do we do a test lab here on management? I mean, that's, that's, that's where we're at, right? Is like, you have these parking spots and zones that are loved, right? And then they're, they're, the parking lots are full and so folks are parking illegally on the road. And it's like, I think we've got to embrace, you know, and, and I don't love the term enforcement, but like, you know, hiring somebody, maybe on staff to, to, you know, it's, it's the open space greeter that's educating folks and, you know, we in my mind, we wanna have these zones that, that don't get overloaded. So whatever the parking is, is is kind of identified and we, we have a certain amount of usage in that zone that's kind of limited by the parking and and, and I think there's ways through technology to, you know, just like we've done in town to have folks set up reservations and hey, when the parking lot's full, it's full. And maybe you can, can pre-reserve your spot. And I, I, I think we've got to jump into management and, and I'd love to figure out, you know, in a joint project with the county in my mind, whether it's Tiger Dredge or wherever, to go try some stuff and learn and grow. Cause the, you know, just having a parking lot and then our, our, our management assigns, you know, I think that era is gonna be coming to an end. And it's like, how do we get in front of that? So that's, that's where I'd love to see some energy and effort here is like, all right, let's go mess some stuff up there and learn.
You know, I think that's a good point, Todd. And I know the county is working on some of their more popular trailheads, have installed cameras at them and they're monitoring, you know, camera takes picture every half hour. So they're monitoring how long people are staying, how full is that parking lot? What time of the day, what days of the week, sort of doing some kind of just off-management.
Cool. Joel, you're getting a gun and a badge. Just, that's where we are.
I'll say this. I'm looking at open space. We have five hundred, over five thousand acres, five hundred trail portals. You know, it, it comes a time when we just, you know, we can't be everything to everybody. And we have enough things to choose from. So yeah, there's gonna be trailheads that can't accommodate the desire. And if that's the case, people get up early and get there early, or they go to another trailhead. You know, we, we, we can't, you know, we, I don't think we can react to the demand all the time, because the demand will never stop growing. You know, well, it's, it's, like I say, nature of, you know, recreator, recreation is a poor of vacuum. They'll just keep coming. So just be, I'd like to look at capacity down the road. I wanna keep that on, on our radar.
Dick?
Tony, you might reach out to Lucy K. and, and plug into the BLB, the, you know, Be Like Breck program and you know, carpooled the trailheads. That, that could be a great message for, for Be Like.
Part of Be Like Breck, yeah.
I mean, it's not gonna solve it, but maybe we can move the needle a little bit with it.
Just a couple of cars. Good.
No, I agree with everything. I think Nugget should get the badge though.
Who's Nugget?
Nugget gets the badge, Joel gets the gun.
Yeah, I think, you know, when we're talking about this, this specifically, Laram is twenty-four days a year that we're really experiencing the problems. And I think, I, I'm happy to see the response from council that, you know, to solve those twenty-four days doesn't mean going up and beyond the gate. So I appreciate.
Everything you need? All right. Okay, that's it. We'll be back at seven. I'm already behind it. We haven't even started. We, are we good to go? All right, I'd like to call to order the town council meeting for Tuesday, March eighth. This is the regular meeting. It is seven oh one PM. And we begin with roll call, please.
Kelly Owens.
Here.
Dick Carlton.
Here.
Jeffrey Bergeron. Carol Sade.
Here.
Beckerman. Todd Rankin.
Here.
Mayor Eric Mamula.
Yes. Uh, all right, before we do anything else, we're gonna do some life-saving awards presentations. And we're gonna begin with police department, the assistant chief.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Could I have Mr. Perry Keller, you come up here for a second? So the awards that we're gonna give out tonight to the officers couldn't have happened without Mr. Keller's being a good citizen and thinking of their fellow man kind of situation. So with that, while who shall see these presence greetings, know that on February fourth, twenty twenty-three, citizen Perry Keller was walking his dog, and I cannot name his dog, but on the footpath behind the claim jumper, Town Homes at eight seventy-seven Airport Road, when he saw his neighbor on the back patio collapse and went to check on him. Mr. Keller also found a female unconscious on a couch inside the apartment. He immediately called nine-one-one and began rendering first aid. Mr. Keller's compassion for human life and prompt decision to stop and check the welfare of his neighbors were the catalyst in obtaining the prompt medical treatment from first responders, resulting in the outcome that, that could otherwise been catastrophic. Is with great appreciation and gratitude that this commendation be presented to you, sir. So I need Sergeant Kendrick Coffin. And Officer Austin Lopez, Officer Ken Kishikoo. Officer Carlos Chavez. So to all who shall see these presence greetings, know on February fourth, twenty twenty-three, Officer Austin Lopez, Officer Ken Kishikoo, Officer Carlos Chavez, and Sergeant Kendrick Coffin responded to the claim jumper Town Homes at eight seventy-seven Airport Road for an emergent medical call involving two persons unconscious and not breathing effectively. Upon arrival, Officer Lopez and Sergeant Coffin began life-saving procedures on the female subject, while Officer Kishikoo and Officer Chavez began life-saving procedures on a male subject on the back patio. These coordinated, multi-pronged treatments on two subjects simultaneously demonstrated great professionalism and teamwork, ultimately saving the lives of these two individuals. It is with great appreciation and gratitude that these life-saving awards be presented to each officer.
Oh, yeah.
Hold on, mayor's coming to.
My turn. I think it's safe to say that one of the most unsung groups in our community that probably works for less money, works longer hours and gets the least amount of respect is the ski patrol. They do a ton of work and all the time. And you know, maybe in the eighties, when they were tearing down the Little Jumps I was building, I wasn't a huge fan, but, but they do such great work every day and really just don't get the recognition, I think, from the community and partially because they work at the scary and you don't work for the town. You know, we don't think about you all the time like we should, but the work you guys do daily and the hard work, not just, you know, dealing with the, the community, but putting up snow fences and wrapping the ski poles with the safety pads and all that just difficult work. We truly, truly respect and are grateful for that you keep Breckenridge a safe community. So when we heard about what happened in early March, where you facilitated as a group, the landing of three, two Flight For Life helicopters and did CPR to resuscitate somebody and kept them alive, we thought it was time for us to say thank you for all you do. And just know that the town council really respects and honors your job and you as members of the Breckenridge community. So, thank you. And I have a letter here I'm gonna give to, who's in charge tonight? Is it Duke? He looks like it.
Cool, well done.
Thank you, guys.
Well, that's a feel-good way to start the meeting.
Yeah. Feel the first time Carol contradicts me. Right? Oh, yeah. Do you hear the little things going off? Okay, we have approval in minutes for March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. None of you have to feel like you need to stay. Just so you know, you don't have, you could just walk right out. It's totally fine. Hate to make you feel uncomfortable just sitting around doing, watching us. Okay, council minutes for March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Any changes, anyone? All right, meetings, minutes of the meeting standard presented. We have agenda. Shannon? All right, no changes to that. We have communications to council. We begin with public comment. Non-agenda items only. These are three minutes in length. Anybody have anything to say this evening? And with that, the public comment period is closed. BTO update, Lucy K.
Mayor and council, I have to say I'm feeling terribly inadequate and not like saving lives and doing things, but we, I can talk to you about room nights. Hopefully we're improving some quality of life for people somewhere. Wow, that was really impressive tonight. I think that's so cool, especially with recognizing patrol. That's huge. That's just huge. Anyway, so BTO business, lodging for the winter, we're running about seven percent off of last year. So that's, that's not too bad, you know, with ADRs, you know, revenue's in a good place. We've got ninety, about ninety-five percent on the books. So that's probably about where we're gonna land, five to seven percent down for the winter. Things really fall off after Easter, no surprise. That's April ninth. Uh, summertime, we're looking at twenty-three percent down, not overly concerned about that. We only have about twenty-five percent of the summer business on the books, so it's twenty-three percent of a small number. These numbers have been fluctuating wildly. Now we get this data, like These numbers have been fluctuating wildly. Now we get this data like weekly, we look at it all the time, and it's moving all over the place. And so we're really working through making sure that we're buying, you know, what what we're seeing. One of the dynamics that Bill and I are really drilling into is understanding the owner usage in occupancy and room nights. We're getting this data from key data. We didn't see it the same way before. And we're seeing really big fluctuations. We want to make sure that it's real. It makes sense, some of it intuitively, that during COVID and the last couple of years, owners were using their units because they wanted to be up here when it was safe, and now there's less owner usage. But we're seeing that move a lot. So we're, we'll keep reporting on that as we get a little bit more confidence in it. But anyway, for summer, we're not overly concerned down yet with the 23%, but we are going ahead. And we're going to start doing the work. So we have, in case we have to go deeper in the funnel, you know, we have that phase marketing plan. If it stays at 23% down, we absolutely are going to move. So we're going to go ahead and do the work and get that creative ready. We may or may not need to deploy it closer in, but we'll give it like another month or so and then see where we are. So we'll be very quick to move if and when we decide to do that, and we'll let you know when that is too, just so you know. We are, any questions on lodging or comments or anything? Okay. We are, the BTO board, last week, we had our strategic planning retreat. We're looking at 2024, you know, so we went through our strategic goals. Thank you, Dick, for hanging in with us and Kelly for coming in for Brian Lewandowski did his economic outlook, and that deck is available to all of you. I think Peyton may have already sent it out to you. But we had a really good meeting, went through a lot of things, but the two points I'll put on out for you all, so you know, are we talked a lot about the landing zone, like what's the landing zone for business in two, a summer 2024? Because, you know, we hear about it when it's too busy. We hear about it like, you know, where, where is everybody, you know, that kind of stuff. So where we settled is, we're still looking at 2019 volume levels. We know it'll be a lot higher revenue because of ADRs, but 2019 volume levels plus, you know, 1% to 3% growth. So that's kind of what we think is going to be the acceptable landing zone. We'll have plenty of time. If you all feel it should be more than that or less than that, but that seemed to be the place that everyone thought was appropriate for the BTO to target. The other significant thing we did was we change, we only have, we keep it to five goals. My, I'm a big believer in strategic plans need to fit on one page. We replaced one of our goals with a DEI goal. We've had DEI baked into all of our work. But we think it's important enough that we wanted to pull that forward and have it be its own goal. And it's really for us, it's going to be around bringing forth the data so that we can be making better decisions and the community as a whole can be making better decisions about being, making sure we're as inclusive as we can be. Because we're not sure right now, you know, we really know what that means. So that will be a very long-term goal. But it's, that's a significant shift for us to pull that forward like that. This morning, we had the BTO planning session that was the outcome of that. And that's where we really put the, the, I guess, start building out our plans and the tactics and initiatives behind the goals that the board put together. A big part of our conversation and something for you all to think about too is going to be just how rapidly technology is changing and what that's going to mean for us. So that is, you know, the metaverse, that is chat GPT and the pros and cons of all these things. It's moving so quickly. And it could be a really good thing, or it could become a very difficult thing. So we're going to put some real emphasis in trying to stay in front of that and sharing that with the community, because I think for a lot of the businesses in the community, there's not the resources to be in front of that and really understand like, yeah, that looks really cool, but here's what could go wrong with that. So we'll put a lot of emphasis in that. The overall outlook between the two meetings and looking at a lot of industry data, just so you know, the overall, overall outlook for travel is really, really strong. The intent to travel, and this is from Destination Analyst, Longwoods, MMGY, all our usual sources, intent to travel is like the number one thing people are going to spend money on. Even the people, 53% of travelers believe there's going to be some kind of recession or downturn in the next six months. They still, the number one priority is going to be travel. You know, they'll skip the new car. They might skip appliances, but they're going to travel. So that's the good news in our business. You know, what we don't know is where is Breckenridge on that continuum? Because there's a lot of feeling about, well, I want to go where nobody else has been, go to places no one's heard of, you know, that kind of thing. Colorado is number 10 and states that people want to visit. Yeah, it's kind of low for Colorado, I think. So I think people are looking for, like, who goes mountain biking in Nevada? You know, like, it's that kind of stuff. So we're, we're spending some time figuring out how do we position what we have, you know, for greater dispersion and offering some of that without going too far and making sure we don't wreck it, right? So that's, you know, it's complicated. So there's going to be a lot of work around that. What else? We've got a new PR Director, Melissa Andrews, who I'm sure you'll meet here before long. The next thing I just wanted to throw out there, we are hosting April 10th through 12th, the Colorado Tourism Office Leadership Journey Group. We'll have about 22 you know, really students attendees in this program. I think Eric, you might be speaking with, they might reach out to you to say, it's like for a housing panel. Yeah, and Lori. And so they're here the 10th through the 12th with BTO. So you know, we've got two employees in there, Holly Blando and Tessa Breder are both participants in that program. It's a really good program. So thank you, Eric, for being willing to do that. And then just two other things on deck. We've got our summer preview, April 6th here in Town Hall. That'll be at nine o'clock, and that's where we show, share with the community our plans for the summer. And the resort will have a small role in that. They take a bigger role in the winter preview, of course. And then, so you know, our annual meeting will be in here too. That's June 15th, and we will have Tim Wolfe, the Executive Director from the CTO, is going to come back for that. He really likes it here, and he is impressed with how many people pack the room, so he will come back. So that's what we have. Questions?
Lucy, questions? No? What do you got?
I would just say, you haven't saved anybody's life, but the topic of conversation over at Council Dinner was what an awesome job you've done and are doing.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Well, it's, it's the group, right? It's, it's everybody. Like, I don't, trust me, I couldn't like update Facebook to save my life, but somebody else knows how to do it, right?
You're the brains of the organization, though, Lucy. Don't don't forget that. Alrighty, thank you so much. Second readings tonight. We have Council Bill number 11, Series 2023. This is a bill for an ordinance to reduce single-use plastics and in connection therewith, establish fines and penalties. Matt?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you mentioned, before this evening is a bill for an ordinance to comply with provisions in State of Colorado House Bill 21-1162. Beyond that, it is to expand regulations to limit single-use plastics in order to meet the material management goals that were adopted in our Sustainable Breck Plan Update in 2022. One change from the first reading to add rulemaking authority provision, allowing staff to continue to clarify and develop programmatic aspects of this ordinance. Also from earlier, we will remove the word farmers from market in the next version. So it is staff's recommendation at Council pass the bill this evening on second reading, and I'm available for questions.
It's local, moving local, not farm.
Yep.
Because there's no farms locally. Alrighty, any questions for staff? Anyone in the audience wish to comment on the second reading of this bill? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On second reading, a movie pass Council Bill number 11, Series 2023, the title which has been read into the record.
Here's a motion in a second. Any further discussion by council? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade. Councilmember Bergeron. Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have a couple of first readings. The first is Council Bill number 12, Series 2023, Bill for an ordinance approving the Stables Village Project Agreement.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Melanie Lees, the Housing Project Manager. I'm here to review any questions you all might have on the Stables, first reading of the Stables Development Agreement. And staff at this time is recommending moving forward with this first reading.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff? Anyone in the public wish to comment on the first reading of this ordinance? No? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On first reading, a movie pass Council Bill number 12, Series 2023, the title which has been read into the record.
Here's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Want to mention Sean, because he sent me a text.
Yeah, one thing that was brought to my attention, some guys were in last week and didn't speak up, so I called them and they shared it. And their concern is safety of the intersection of, I guess that's Rileyne and Wellington, you know, right there at Little Red. One of the gentlemen works at home and has an office right there and watches people just blow that stop sign constantly. So I don't know, Chief, I know you worked with him some, Sean. But, you know, he's got a good point, you know, as we increase the density in that neighborhood. You know, the, the intersections probably could get more dangerous. We have a daycare center there. We have a lot of kids on bikes and walking and, and I don't know if, when we're looking at this, we need to build in, you know, some traffic calming devices for that intersection or or more enforcement or all of the above, or, but, you know, I just, I thought it was a legitimate concern and encourages us to really take a hard look at not only congestion at that intersection, but safety at that intersection and compliance with the traffic signs. So the other things we could do to, to help encourage people to be more compliant.
Absolutely. We will look into that as we continue to move forward.
Thanks. Appreciate it, Melly.
Of course.
Did you do a motion or anything? No.
Okay. He, you said he did?
Yeah.
Oh. Yeah. See, I forgot too.
Wait a minute. No.
And I forgot to speak when I was supposed to, so.
Ask you to.
Yeah, he, yeah.
Clarity on the next reading of like some of the stuff that you're working on, Kirsten?
Yes. Sorry, Mayor and Council, we have some non-substantive legal jargon, as Melanie called it, that needs to be finessed, including the developer fee and the indemnification clause, as well as books and records. And I can see everyone's glossing over, so we will fix those between readings.
Cool.
Do anything on second reading, you know?
Member Sade. Yes. Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. With Council Bill number 13, Series 2023, this is a bill for an ordinance proving the Open Space and Trails Master Plan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Before you is, on first reading is the Open Space and Trails Master Plan, which has been developed over the last couple of years and is before you for first reading to be approved through the ordinance process. I'm available for any questions that you have.
Questions? Questions we haven't already beaten to death?
No.
The public with, yes?
So there are some typos on the online version that we're going to fix, and these two, both of the two ordinances, the stables and this one are process-oriented ordinances. And that's the difference why we can fix those and just clean them up, but that will be done.
He's buying one of those stables properties right now. Comment on the Open Space Master Plan. Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion, Jeffrey?
My first reading, a movie pass Council Bill number 13, Series 2023, the title which has been read into the record by Seth.
There is a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin. Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right, we have Planning Commission decisions from March 21st, 2023. You got to call up Mr. Carlton? Nope.
I made sure Kelly did that earlier.
That planning commission decisions are proved as presented with the report of town manager and staff.
Did you want to talk about that presentation, the fellow?
Yes. Yeah.
Not now.
Go ahead. No, I have, at some point we have to. So what did he send you? So there's a guy that's he's an ex-SEAL. He would like to bring, they do a lot of work at Camp Hale. There was a time in, in Breck where a group of 10th Mountain Division guys used to come here and ski here and train here, like the current 10th Mountain. And I don't know why that went away, but it did. He's been getting involved with this group at Camp Hale, even though he's not 10th Mountain Division, he's a SEAL. And he wondered if we would be interested in, you know, maybe doing something like this again, if we would be willing to reach out to the skieria to get like season passes that they, almost like medallions that they could use for these guys when they come up here with their families. And I've talked to him a couple of times and he sent us some stuff.
And I think he wanted to do a presentation at council, which we could do if you would like to have him do that, or we can pull his email and contact him and get some more information and then give you more.
Guys interested in at least looking into this? You know, he's happy to come up here and do the whole, the whole show too. So that's sort of what he does now.
I think it's more the information that we.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry about that. I should have pulled it up.
Yeah, that's all right. I brought it up at least. What else you got?
So in the past, Peyton used to send you all a fairly lengthy PDF document that had like calendar of events. It would have had the DMMO downloads and a lot of information. What we're talking about right now is doing something that's sort of in between that document, which was probably too lengthy for you all to be reading and the updates that I send you when information is available. What we wanted to see is, is there anything that you all want to see? Do you want Peyton to go back to that document? Do you like the amount of information you're getting now? Sort of what's the sweet spot for you guys with that kind of information? I don't want Peyton to go back to doing that newsletter if it's too much and you guys aren't, weren't getting value out of it.
I personally like what you send us now.
Okay.
I think it's a good mix of stuff we need to see and, you know, the letters.
You know, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, please.
I, I agree. I, because most of the, a lot of the other stuff you get anyway, at least I get anyway. Yeah.
That's small, like the, the events that are upcoming eventually, like the next quarter or something.
Those are good.
That's kind of cool. I've always liked that.
I like that too.
Okay. All right. If anything else comes to you that you'd like to see, let us know. And then the only other thing I was going to bring up was the question about horses on McCain, but I can wait. And if Jeffrey's going to bring that up during the open space.
All right. Let's go to council reports. I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you as brief as I can, but this is super important. And, you know, I hate to, I hate to burn time talking about this kind of stuff, but this is an important one, and I definitely need head nod or guidance from the council, because I'm in deep on the governor's land use, and so is Kirsten, and so is Shannon. We've been spending a lot of time on what came, where the governor pushed down to Senator Moreno, and they came up with a legislation. It's 106 pages long. A lot of it is cut and pasted between sections, but the section, oh, yeah, Mark, Mark came down in case you have any land use questions. In, in general, it really does step on our our land use, sort of the way we do land use. It's really allowing, um, if, if it was passed as presented, it would allow a developer to do a bunch of stuff that we don't normally allow. And the way it's written, there are no affordability targets. So it allows ADUs by right. So you could put an ADU on any piece of property that has, is designated as single family. And there is no affordability target to it. So a developer could just build an ADU and that's it. We have no say. There's even language in here that will allow that ADU to be within five feet of the rear setback where ours is 15 feet. So it, it violates some of that stuff. There are some things in there that, that you cannot be more restrictive on the ADU than you are on the single family lot. So you know, some of our planning stuff would work, but for the most part, it really just takes away all our rights to influence some of the design and patterns that we have in the community. There's a, there's another section about middle housing and that's a, that's really takes the place of duplex, triplex, multifamily. You could build between a two and a sixplex also on just about any property that's designated as a single family. And again, there is no affordability targets in any of this legislation. So in depending how you read this, there's also this thing called a key corridor, which Kirsten's trying to figure out what the hell that means. But if, if a key corridor area in Breck, a developer had a piece of land, they could build a sixplex, no questions asked. We can't slow them down. They really don't even seem like they have to go to the process like, like we do, uh, like we would make them go through. Uh, obviously there are a lot of problems, not only for us, but for what we're calling the 15, this cast 15, there are 15 other communities that have been called out in the legislation as rural resort job centers. Breck, Steamboat, Crested Butte, Telluride, Frisco, Silverthorne, Dillon. So there's 15 Avon, Vale. Oh, I met with the mayors from that group in cast today. I have met with some larger groups of just cast. Yesterday I met with Dylan Roberts, Kelly and I did to talk this through, cause it's going to his committee next. Um, we've had multiple meetings with Nathan Lindquist, who is the C dot planner who's been tasked with this. He was a planner in rifle originally, um, and Aleni Angelidis, who is the governor's sort of designated point person to get this legislation through. We have done, I think, an unbelievable amount of work between our group and then Sarah Ott with Aspen has been the other sort of cast point person, trying to get them to understand the difference between the front range and what we do up here. Um, and among those things are affordability targets that we've done, the amount of affordable housing that we've created, both by purchase and by, by build. The, um, different kind of planning that we have up here. I explained to them, uh, our planning process is not normally clear, clear in planning, which they had no idea that that even existed. The massive amount of work that Lori and her group have done on deed restrictions over the last 20 years is it, it's almost like, like speaking a different language when I try to explain how important this stuff is. If the governor truly wants workforce housing, this has to be part of this legislation. And currently his belief is that you just build a ton of housing and that will solve the problem. Now, that might work on the front range. That might work in Greeley where they're hoping to build 5,000 units. Does not work in a landlocked, infrastructure poor region like ours where those homes, if they're not deed restricted will become ski. You know, you can't, if you can't do STRs, you can rent them in six months at a time and they are, they are weekend vacation ski lodges for the front range. And I feel like the governor's team's starting to understand some of what we're saying, but um, I, I gotta tell you, it's, it's sort of scary. We've spent all this time worrying about things like the amount of density and how we do things like TDRs and the joint upper blue master plan and the 500 units that we own on town property that we transfer to make affordable housing work. All that stuff becomes irrelevant if this goes through the way it is going right now. So it's, it's been frustrating to a certain extent. I mean, the, the ordinance itself is like mind numbing, just that the lack of of any, anything other than knowledge of the front range. That's really, this is really front range driven and how things happen down there. Now, we're not getting a whole lot of support from our county or other counties. Counties are out of the mix in this. This, there's no requirement for counties to do anything. This is, this is metropolitan municipalities, this is urban centers, this is the rural resorts, and then some smaller towns, zero about, about counties. I've spoken with Commissioner Pogue several times. This doesn't bother her too much because it solves some of their problems with housing. She feels like they can get a bunch of housing out of this, but you know, the county's not even Breckenridge. One of the other things that's, I, I mean, there's so many things that are, that are really really don't make sense, but one of the, one of the things that's really sort of crazy is the agency that's going to run this whole thing is a multi-agency that's headed by DOLA. So Department of Local Affairs is going to have to somehow staff up to do this. And the agency that's gonna, gonna sort of run the program and decide if you're doing the right thing is somebody from the energy office, Department of Natural Resources, Department of Transportation and DOLA. That's it. There's no local representation on any of this. So we have asked for that. So today during the cast meeting, um, sorry, during the cast meeting, yesterday, the cast managers, including Rick and Shannon, were you on that call? Um, came up with a sort of a request for amendments. The first thing that we're asking for is they slow down the bill's review. Currently there's a, a it looks like April 4th is when they're going to take this thing to committee. Cast is asking that that be pushed off till April 25th, so we can have some time to sort of formulate some strategies. Um, we asked, um, the managers didn't put this in, but today in our meeting, we ask that they consider an opt out. So if you're in a town of 5,000 people and you've built 1,200 units in the last 10 years, you should get to opt out from this program because you're already doing the right thing compared to municipalities that aren't. We, you know, we, there's a thing about statewide and regional housing needs and figuring out what your, your region needs. I, I got a bit of a problem with the whole region thing because you know, the county is not really a great region. For us, it'd be Upper Blue. So if they would somehow build language in there that you can, you know, moderate those regions, I'd be okay with doing this regional housing assessment between Blue River, Town of Breck, this part of the county. I think that's legitimate. We do that kind of stuff. Steph already has that kind of stuff in the works. We, we really do want to be able to retain authority and discretion, determine appropriate man, management um, and the manner of implementation of ADUs, if this is an ADU by right situation. And we want to be able to impose our deed restrictions on anything that comes out of this legislation. They, there's these two, this middle density and key quarter thing that depending how you read it or how they mean it could really spell trouble to us. And I didn't even really pick up, up on this. Kirsten really said this, this is, this is a place if, if they consider our whole area key quarter, that means you could put a sixplex anywhere. So you could go to the Highlands, buy a lot in the Highlands, build a sixplex. You go to the Weishorn, do a teardown, build a sixplex. You don't have to meet any parking requirements either. There's, they, they will do away with all our parking requirements. So you could do a sixplex on a single family lot and not provide parking for the 15 cars that will be in that.
And then you could sell each of them for a million bucks?
You could current, currently you could currently not, you could rent them. You couldn't do an STR, but you could rent them on a, you know, monthly basis. Um, whatever our local, they, they sort of support the STR, but Kirsten doesn't like the way that they wrote the STR in here because it almost seemed like there, they could circumvent our code through it. So we're in support of forming a rural resort task force comprised of the 15 rural resort job centers. And you know, working on this stuff so that, you know, by, by June of 2025, we could have some goals and, and recommendations on how to move forward, but super troubling. And you know, in every discussion we have, I feel like they listen, but then nothing happens the next day. And then I have the same discussion the next day and then the next day. And you know, I talked with Dylan and Dylan seemed very sympathetic to a lot of these things. The one thing I did say to, um, to cast today, I, I, I don't think they're going to slow this down. I don't think they're going to allow an opt out provision. The one ace that we have that I think, you know, originally I said density was the hill I will die on. Affordability is the hill I will die on. Affordability changes the complexion of this entirely. If this goes through and they say we're going to push this through, but local municipalities get to use their own land, um, affordability metric and matrix and you know, designations. I think we have a much better handle on what, listen, a developer is not going to come build a sixplex if he can't just sell it. He's not going to come in if we say it's got to be 80% AMI or something like that. So that, that's something I think the cast needs to continue to hammer on. CML is coming out as opposed. They're just completely opposed to this. And if we get to the place that this passes, there's bound to be a ton of lawsuits just based on the home rule piece. We're not even talking about how this affects our home rule designation at the moment. There's plenty of other players in time that will launch off into that. I know there are a bunch of metro mayors that are not happy with this. Mayor of Colorado Springs in particular is really pretty pissed. Some of the other mayors are not happy about, but some are because they have big NIMBY problems in their communities and this solves that for them. Um, Jonathan Geddes in, uh, in Glenwood Springs said, if this had happened two or three years ago, he would have supported it because they had the opportunity to build 2,500 units and the neighbors wouldn't let them. So that's what we're dealing with on the other side is there are municipalities that think this is the way to get stuff done. And the one thing the governor has pointed to multiple times is Lake Hill. She was on the Senate when Lake Hill got approved as a sale from, um, I guess Forest Service to the county. And it pisses him off that that's not completed yet.
But since this excludes counties, how would that impact?
Who knows? Although because it's the town of Frisco that's putting up the roadblocks, maybe that's a problem, but really the roadblock for that one right now is the sand district and the water district. There's a whole bunch of water stuff in here that almost seems like it was thrown in at the last minute. Go ahead. Fill in everything that I, I, I missed. No, I mean, Kirsten's been great on this. She's really, really great.
I concur with everything you're saying. There is so much to say. It's hard to know what is the most salient point, but it, A, we want to be at the table with these people. We want to try to influence it at every point. So we have to stay collaborative with them. I would say deed restrictions is a hill to die on. But I also am very, very concerned about DOLA's approval authority over these plans because that is what's going to say, what is a key corridor? And it's also going to say, what is our net density, which is probably going to be a lot higher than we think it is. So we have to stay focused on this, like non juicy, dry process stuff as much as the substantive stuff. Substantive stuff jumps off the paper, but the process stuff can't be lost in the conversation. And then let's see.
The water.
Yes. The, the, some of the legal problems with the bill is bills are supposed to cover single subjects. This one covers so many subjects, it's hard to keep track of them. The water I have been talking regularly to about with Glenn and I just sent it to James team as well. That is language that came from a previous bill that died in another session. I think it needs to come out. Right now it doesn't seem to really have a lot of teeth, but the, the concern is that if it creeps into dictating how we use our municipal water, because the idea behind it is that more density is somehow going to be better for our resources and that's not necessarily true. I think that's all I'll say for now.
But that's a big part of this. A lot of this is driven by sustainability efforts. And the general philosophy is that if you build a sixplex instead of a single family, you use less water per person, use less heat per person, use less land per person. Well, yeah, I'm, yeah, you could probably make that argument, but that doesn't really work up here where we talk about limited infrastructure. You know, we just don't have the resources that they have in the front range. So it's not the same. I am planning on, um, so now I, I've been the cast sort of, um, tip of the spear for cast with Sarah Ott. Um, I'm planning on continuing, um, the mayor of Avon and the mayor of was another mayor that also volunteered to be part of a, um, a little working group with three managers just to sort of work through this. Um, I am planning on, um, testifying when the time comes and you know, in that I, I think important things for us are, are joint upper blue master plan, our TDR program. You know, the, the way that we have regulated and controlled and, um, you know, value density over all these years, I think is really important.
I would, I would also say for those of you that want to read it, there's ways to look at this that I'm sure we're not. So please send us any thoughts, like especially from sitting on planning and, um, we have a one pager that I think will be distributed. So we'll share it with all of your two pagers.
I sent it.
Oh, you did?
Just a few minutes.
Okay.
Have time, take a moment and read that. I mean, really sit down and really read it. It's really that it's, it's Kirsten's distillation of the whole legislation. And really it'll explain it better than I can about what's going on. So, um, Mark, do you have anything to add?
No, I mean.
Um, you know, Eric and Kirsten really touched on it, but the intent is obviously a good one. The problem is, is how it relates up here. Um, when you look at the front range, a developer down there that's building track homes for, they're building it for their workforce. They don't necessarily need a deed restriction on those. And they're still going to be affordable to the community. Up here, we know that's not the case. Our Lori did some analysis and you know, the average AMI person here can afford maybe a $450,000 home. We know for a three bedroom home, that's going to run a $1.5 million here. They're just market homes are not within the reach of our, you know, workforce. And, uh, so we have to have deed restrictions. And if we don't, like Eric said, this is just going to be a bunch of, you know, opportunities for developers to densify properties throughout town without any benefit for our workforce. So.
Yeah. And that, you know, there's a good point there too. And I, we keep trying to push not only affordability, but workforce. You know, the, the, that's got to be a big part of what we talk about because some of the things that they're doing, they have a different sort of need set for people that want, that are needing these homes on the front range. They have a much bigger senior population. They have a much bigger population of people that don't work that they're, they're trying to house. You know, for us, it really is about the workforce. It's about that 30 hour, 30 hour a week, work week. It's about those things that we need to make sure that we can continue to, um, to put on these properties to make, make this stuff work for us. I tell you a funny thing, Ryan Highland said, Ryan Highland came on Galute yesterday, which was in itself awesome. But he said, he said, we're doing AP calc up here and they're starting to talk about basic math. So it was an awesome Ryan Highland moment.
Mark, if this, um, you know, if we have no, if it turns out that we can't change the bill, that it just passes as is, are there any guardrails that we can put on with our code that can kind of hedge against what our fears are on this of?
Fortunately, um, the way it's reads right now, those guardrails kind of have to go away. And, um, that we can't be more restrictive. And so that's going to be the problem, at least with the legislation as written. I mean, right, I mean, for example, um, you know, we, we don't allow lot splits outside of the historic districts. You know, if you've got one lot and you want to split it into You know, if you've got one lot and you want to split it in, you know, into two, we don't allow that right now. That's that's going to go away. You know, we don't allow, uh, you know, in a subdivision like Highlands to Eric's point to all of a sudden have a fourplex or a sixplex. Those things we couldn't avoid. The same thing with, you know, with ADUs, the issue is. You know, if we can't have a deed restriction on the ADUs, well, that just becomes de facto another unit, another market unit that's out there. So. It's problematic the way it's worded.
Completely contrary to home rule?
Yes.
That was that was brilliant.
Really?
Yes, I wish we could have captured that to bring it down to the capital. Um. There's the it is a constitutional home rule land use authority is baked into the constitution. It's not just state law. So yes, there's going to be preemption challenges for sure.
All the uh all the um. Homeowners associations too with this, so homeowner associations will lose all of their. Cloud in this too, so you'll have challenges from every HOA also.
Then they could have pets at that place.
Well, there you go, cats everywhere.
Eric of the cast fifteen, how many are represented represented by Dylan? And every single one of those.
I told every mayor to call Dylan that, you know, they were like, oh, let's have all the councils call. I was like, you know, that might be a little overwhelming. Every mayor in that group needs to call Dylan and say. You know, this is what we believe in, and then we need to start calling um Julie also.
Are all the cast aligned on like the main?
Yes, everybody totally agreed on everything. There was no. You you know, the 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 cast members that are in communities exactly like ours, Aspen Steamboat, Crested Butte. All are really pretty frightened of this. Jonathan in Glenwood Springs is a little less so because he's got more land to deal with. He's got. Less water issues. He's got, you know, he's got different issues. But he still doesn't like this, you know. It's really a it's at at the cast level, it's a matter of degrees. Now, I've also sat on a couple of calls with. Um cast, CCI, CCAT, so the the commissioners group, the metro mayor's group, and that's all over the board. And it I didn't want to sign on to any of what they were saying because they all have. Really wildly different opinions about, you know, the the commissioners. I would, I would, I know this is painting with a broad brush, but. Commissioners in general seem to think that this is okay. And how else are you going to get something done is what Commissioner Pogue um said to me earlier was.
Got a lot done, I know.
That's that's the where I get my my feather feathers get rougher. I know, and Dylan's doing stuff and Frisco's doing stuff. I mean, everybody does.
Aspen's done more than us.
A ton of stuff and Crested Butte has done a ton of stuff.
It's a crazy thing.
So, you know, it's weird that that, I mean, everybody is just incensed about this. It's it's, you know. Like almost in shock as we as we talked through this stuff today. Um, and Margaret's been great, too. She's gotten a lot of. Information out um to the cast community about it. And I think that's who we lean on. We lean on cast. Um, we lean on cast, but I also don't want to distance ourselves too far from CML. But I don't want to be too close to CML that the governor won't talk to us. So we're sort of walking a tight rope between that because. When push comes to shove, we're going to need CML because Bomber is already throwing fists. I mean, he is already. Saying stuff that he probably shouldn't say. I mean, he told the governor, get off my lawn. Was his comment to pay it was like on the radio. Again, yeah, get off my lawn, so or get off our lawn, he said, so. I mean, we need to, we need to use. We need to use their firepower maybe at some point. I still want to be able to talk to Alenny and Nathan because they're sort of in the middle of crafting this, and if we can just get. Rural resorts to have the stuff we want, then it'll be okay. Then then he could get the cast communities to support it. And I think that'd be a win for the governor. Otherwise. I don't, I don't know. I don't understand why. We as the state of Colorado would want to make something like housing so confrontational. And such a big fight between all the municipalities in the state. I I don't know why he would want to go there. Doesn't. It doesn't make any sense to me. There's easier ways to make this stuff work. Uh, we had a long talk with Julie early on and she's. I think she's supportive at the start, but that was before legislation came out. So I don't know, we're going to have to talk to her next, and I think.
Yeah, I've talked to her about that, too, and she's. She's supportive to listen to us. She was pretty non committal every time I've talked, but I haven't. I I talked to her early on as well.
One of the problems is this is the governor's crown jewel right now. That's what they keep saying. So he's going to get some political assistance from his allies. To get this through, but Dylan has said. But these are the people that have voted for me, and these are the people that helped me get elected, so I have to listen to them, so. We hope, we hope that's going to be part of it.
It's a simple, it was very simplistic approach to a very complex problem.
It it that's exactly what it is. It it's written for the front range.
The affordability to me is the key hill to die on, right? Like. If if all this density gets dumped in here, none of those are going to, they're going to be million dollar two bedrooms that are a thousand square feet. There's going to be no workforce housing out of any of that.
Well, an ADU can, so in our plan, an ADU can be a total of. Eight hundred square feet. Oh, or fifty percent, yeah.
The greater of.
That's. Which whichever is less. In here, an ADU is fifty percent of the primary residence. And now they're talking about maybe between six and eight hundred feet. We would make an ADU. You have to permit it between six and eight hundred feet, because I said to him. Well, we have ten thousand square foot houses, so it's okay to build a five thousand square foot ADU and then. You know, subdivide that thing and rent that thing out and have a, you know, a cluster ski lodge in your backyard. Oh, yeah, we didn't think about that. Okay, I know, and I can't, you know, it's hard not to come up with like the worst case scenario when you hear about this stuff, but some of that stuff will happen.
It's it it's the best case scenario for making money. It will happen.
I mean, you just look at the two homes that are on Wellington. They those things are built to the absolute edge, both of those for size. Can you imagine if those were sixplexes or even fourplexes that that had no affordability on them?
We're parked.
And no parking.
Is that he didn't even have to go with affordability. He could have said like worked in the community.
Yeah, I mean.
He didn't want to get into, but it's not even.
I don't think they even thought about it that way. I mean, in his state of the state, he said. If we build enough house, housing will solve the housing crisis. Yeah, I, yeah, maybe that will work. On the other hand, you're going to ruin every little community. Because you're going to allow anything to be built with no. No real planning regulation, no authority. I mean, the things that have made. Our our land use and planning successful is all the time that we've taken as a community to build a a code. And to enforce a code and as much as developers, when they walk in the room, can't stand it. Oftentimes on the way out and Jay, you will, you know this, they will say. I'm glad we went through the process because the project's better now than it was when I brought it in. Because it is, because you we. Get to build a project that's what the community wants through its code. And this just doesn't allow any of that. So. So if you guys are okay with it, I'll continue to keep working with Shannon and Kirsten unless you have some reservations and.
No, thank you.
Would rather send Jeffrey.
I killed my buzz from the life saving field.
Should have.
Yeah, good work, yeah.
Thank you. I worked, I appreciate.
I think it's unnecessary and the ramifications are really serious, so.
They are. I'm I'm happy that they reached out to us early on and we got into the process early. So they sort of. They they still do talk to us, so. All right. Okay, uh, that's what I had. Um, open space. Anything, Dad?
Yeah, we had a meeting last night, a couple of things. Uh, BOSAC is not supportive of temporary housing horses during the winter months at McCain property. Um, many felt it set a bad precedent. The Goldrun Gulch, the Golden Nordic Center sleigh rides. Were kind of looking into that. Um, and they though they bring significant revenue. To Golden Nordic Center, BOSAC itself wasn't into um using uh uh McCain property. For kind of winter stables and stuff for the for the horses. Um, I'm sure you hear more about that. Applications for BOSAC are accepted through Friday, the thirty first. Um, and then we Shannon covered the quandary collaboration between county, town and county. Um, then we talked about some of the parking lots, which now are a moot point because the council weighed in. One cool thing, Ecolmetrics uh presented the twenty twenty two report of cucumber gulch preserve. Highlighting the natural systems and adaptive adaptive management approach taken. Overall trends are fairly good, a knock on wood. The beavers, some beavers have come back. Uh, they're in the kind of the middle portion of the gulch, uh, following some work to redistribute water. No boreal toads were found, but we're working with. I think the Denver Zoo that has bore has like a a boreal toad program. Where you can, you know, you can come and buy boreal toads and put them anywhere. No, you have to, you have to put them in places that that they'll live. So, yeah, we're working at Denver Zoo, some of the they have a a program, a conservation program that includes breeding and releasing. Which is.
Are you a part of that program?
Yeah, that was not not in like. Thank God, no. My lifestyle when I was single. Um, so, yeah, so that's kind of cool and but in in a nutshell. Cucumber gulch is relatively healthy. One concern is um on the sediment, the spread of ponds. The the sediment is building up in the middle of the pond where it's unreachable. You know, we can go in and dredge periodically. Skiers cooperate in that regard, but so that's something we'll keep a look at.
Below Ski Hill Road?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Boy, that sixty inch pipe. Um, and then we talked about, uh, uh, oh, one of the concerns was, I guess there's a lot of um. Uh, snowmobile trailer parking at the Sally Barber Trailhead. And which is, which is all well and good. They're they're allowed to go up on but gill or whatnot, but rather than um rather than parking. Head in where it could kind of conserve the space. Some of them were just kind of parking uh parallel and taking up like eight to ten spots. Um, so uh maybe we'll do some signs and that comes under a.
It seems like the real solution is build a bigger, bigger parking.
I, yeah, I think bigger park and and and, yeah, and maybe layer it. But, uh, yeah, so that that was a that was in there again, that was a kind of a complaint from a commissioner or observation. Um, you know, I ski up there for a mountain, haven't seen it. It depends when you get there, it depends what day, so. Uh, that's about it.
Well, the sheriff was big on ticketing for a while.
Yeah.
And then it sort of went away again, so maybe we can ask them to.
Yeah, and you know.
For a bit.
And maybe just, yeah, straight in park. And you know what? I'm not too concerned. That's a dead end road essentially. It comes to mountain meadows in a gate. If trailers want to park on this north side of the road, you know, kind of along the road. You know, that's fine. Um, but I I guess it. What's that?
That sign says Jeffrey.
Cause I'm, I'm, as you know, I'm a law or odd candidate. Uh, but the big thing is, yeah, I guess they were parking, you know, where the where the automobile parking generally is. And they're parking kind of heading east to west opposed to straight in, so. But, yeah, it was a it was a a good meeting spirited and um, yeah, so.
Todd called me to bring up whether we wanted to increase the size of BOSAC or not.
Yeah, I thought a lot about that. I talked to him about it.
And?
You know what? I don't, I I I think. I think it could be unwieldy. I defer to Scott.
Come set, do it.
Uh, no, you know what? I, you know, I I I'm starting to feel sorry for him. So, yeah, I don't know. What what do you think? I is it necessary to expand BOSAC? It's the most desired commission. Don't, uh, I think, I mean.
Can I chime in real quick just on my my thoughts? Um. One of the things I think through the years is we've we've definitely had some incumbents that that weren't reappointed, so we've lost some institutional knowledge because there weren't enough seats. I've seen a couple of folks in the community that have applied a couple of times that have maybe been discouraged to to be involved in other. Opportunities to to volunteer with the town. So to me, it's this almost. There's so much demand to be on it that I I think it could be a really cool way to grow more leadership in the community, and then. When we're trying to fill other spots, it's like, well, hey, you you served on on OSAC or BOSAC. We need a little help here. So to me, it's this great opportunity. Folks want to do it. It's a great opportunity to get more humans involved uh in the community. And then also with all the work that's going to be required on, you know, trails and signs, it's just. I think it's an opportunity to kind of leverage folks that that want to get involved.
How many would, how many extra would you?
I think I'd add two would be my thoughts to try and keep the group manageable and, you know, I know there's a lot of. It's a lot of folks already, but I'd love to see two more just to kind of grow leadership.
Seven now?
Seven with the council.
Your thoughts on that?
I definitely hear Todd's point about kind of developing more local talent within an area that has a lot of interests. And so I think that's, I I think it's a very valid question and and request, I guess. It's certainly up to you all. Um, I think certainly our meetings at this point um. Can can tend to get long. I think last night's meeting only went till seven forty five or so. Um, but we, you know, we work pretty hard to try to keep the meetings. No one runs a meeting quite like you, Eric. And we try to keep the meetings on point and on time as much as we can, so I think that's probably the the biggest risk, but I think bringing. New voices and new perspectives from the community in there for a desirable position as far as being on that commission. Um, I think is is worth considering. I guess that's where I'd leave it.
Okay.
And we um.
It's good to hear.
We went through that with the BTO when um Lucy had brought it to us that she wanted to expand it to make it bigger because we did have a lot of. Uh, qualified candidates and we wanted succession programs. And I think uh one of the risks that came out of that was a dilution. Of the knowledge that you have in there and almost a loss of engagement when there're just two more people makes that circle. So wide that the voices become softer, less outspoken, and we saw attendance drop. Um, we just saw like disengagement. And I think at a time where we're. We're fighting to have anyone show up for our our, you know, police advisory committee. To make to dilute that pool, I think could be. A a rough step in the evolution of that committee.
I think you grow the pool, though, right? So if you if you get two folks in their twenties and you you know. That that are suddenly plugged into the town stuff because now they've got, you know, maybe it's a really challenging shot to get on there. And you, over time, you get two, four, six, eight more people that have served on on BOSAC and then. Like, hey, I need somebody to step up for the police advisory commission. You've got it. In my mind, you've got a list of folks like, hey. I'm calling one in here like I need some help, like jump in and help out here. To me, it's growing the pool.
I'd say BOSAC is the prime is a is the kind of like the the choice committee in police advisory isn't nearly as much fun. I can.
You don't say that in front of them.
Oh. Oh, geez. Advisory is a blast. Yeah, so anyway, yeah. She guns. I think people would be on the police advisory or liquor and pot. Is that the same thing? Yeah. Liquor, marijuana advisory committee. I don't know. Yeah, I'm.
You know, Jeffrey.
I'd like, I'd like to, uh, no, that's why I don't know because because I know. Um, I'd like to think about it a little bit myself. I'd like to talk to some more people. Uh, talk to, you know, maybe Anne and uh some of the other of the staff and maybe Seth off the record. Because you notice he's quite very politician.
Oh, he's a genius.
He walked a very.
Can you talk to some of the um other members of BOSAC?
Yeah, I think I'd like, yeah, yeah. It's certainly worth discussing. I mean, we need to find ways to get the the younger up and coming folks engaged. We already have five new applicants going for three spots and three incumbents. So we have eight people going for three spots, so. Um, yeah, BOSAC is a choice, you know. Probably less so when Kelly serves on it, but right now it's a very desired board to serve on, you know.
Well, I was just going to say maybe like we should think about a little more of a formal process about, do you want to have. BOSAC weigh in officially, like put it on as an agenda item for them to talk about and recommend to you? Or do you want to?
Yeah, no, I think that's great.
Okay.
I'm super on the fence about it, so I'd like to have as much. I, you know, I I really could go either way and and not worry about it, but. Um, both both sides make excellent points.
I'd get a couple of beers and Seth and maybe get his real opinion.
Find out what he really thinks. He'd like to go down to three.
I'm discouraging. Why don't we have BOSAC come to you with a recommendation on it?
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great idea. Uh, tourism.
Uh, Lucy went over a lot of it. The strategic meeting was was fascinating. It was really good. You know, Lucy kind of encouraged us to. What's the new normal? I mean, let's throw out the old goals, the old strategic goals, and let's let's come up with some new ones and. And um, we we threw out a couple and came up with some new, we tweaked some others and uh. It was, it was a outstanding meeting. A lot of data.
um, it was, it was a outstanding meeting. Um, a lot of data shared. Um, you know, the, the one thing that I, I, maybe I think at some point we as a council need to revisit is the, the year-round question, you know, because really the growth came up. You know, there were some at the table that wanted a lot more growth than others. And um, um, you know, when we started talking about the one to three percent, you know, and I kept trying to beat the strategic drum, you know, we need to do it strategically and push it away from, you know, where we're already over capacity. Uh, fall keeps coming up. And, you know, I, it's no secret to, to any of those folks that we're split on that here on council. And, you know, as hard a discussion as that may be, we, we may want to have it sometime so that we can really give our tourism office some direct, some, some direction on that one. Because if we are going to grow a certain extent, you know, Lucy said one to three and that's what we agreed to percent. Um, you know, she, she, you know, fall would be a logical time to focus a lot of it.
You know, Dick, I think something that, that you need to start to take back to them is, you know, growth is great, but we're already in the middle of a housing problem. And how does that affect? You know, as you, as you grow the community, you grow the community and you create more, you know, more businesses come in. We need more housing. We need more daycare. We need more, you know, additions to the, for the school district.
I don't think it's that level of growth. I think it's filling in some gaps.
Yeah, I worry about that with growing something like fall though, and even talking about growing fall. Because one of the things that, that is almost a stopgap in the community for, for too many new businesses coming in is the cyclical nature of.
Stopgap for a lot of people to own homes.
There are no homes to own, you know.
Or to be able to step up out of be restrictive into market rent rate. So I, you know, I, we're not unified on that one. And um, that's why I'm encouraging us to have a discussion about it. And to, to be able to send a clear.
Sort of in the whole capacity analysis discussion, I think we have discussion about what, what kind of message we send to the BTO for growth.
I think the, the other piece of that, and it's on my to-do list um from the fall, which I hate to admit, um, is a, a look again at the goals. Specifically because we had the, we have that year-round piece in there and we don't have any kind of equity language in those goals. And so I think it would be great if we could bring back the capacity, the goal discussion with the capacity analysis and how you all have a longer um discussion on where you want to land.
Shannon, one thing that came up, because that, you know, I did follow up and ask Lucy about where are we on that? And she brought up a great point, you know. The, the, the destination management plan was not a council plan. That was a community plan. And she's really hesitant to have council change it. Because it's not a council plan. It's a community plan. And I think, you know, we're not slated to do it again for, I think, five or six years. So.
We could change her. I mean, we aligned our goals with that. We can verge our goals from.
Sure, sure, we can. But, yeah, I just, you know, she was hesitant and I thought for a very valid reason to change the.
No, I, I agree with that.
Yeah. So it was, you know, it was interesting discussions and, but great strategic meeting and uh, um, yeah, I mean, Lucy's just so on it. Um, you know, a lot of the, the data was just fascinating and, and she really stressed, she stressed it again tonight. From a macro standpoint, I think we are in good shape. You know, there is a lot of demand for travel. Um, now, a lot of it, the, you know, the, the overseas trap, international travel, outgoing international travel is back strong. So that, that competes with us. Um, you know, this, she touched on it as well. You know, the Gen Z's are really into doing something that their friends haven't. Which kind of, kind of rules us out in a lot of ways. So we've dropped, she said we are number ten in the, in the, in the state. And, I mean, in the country, Colorado. Um, and that was a drop. I forget where we were before, but we dropped some there. So any, as a state, we don't spend, we, we really spend a pittance on, on tourism as a state. Um, compared to others in, in the importance of the tourism industry to our state. So. Uh, really good meeting. Awesome, really good meeting. I look forward to see the, the plan, you know, the staff's refinement of it and their plan. And then we'll bring it back with more detail once the staff, you know, massages it a bit and brings it back to the board.
Sweet, thank you.
Yeah, it was good.
History.
Have not had a meeting.
Uh, creative arts, anything to add?
Not a thing.
Events?
I don't think we had.
Uh, childcare?
No meaning.
Workforce housing, anything to?
Yeah, I think Laurie went over it pretty well. Todd, anything to add? I didn't really have any.
Um, one thing I'd like to get, Mark, is a um, sort of a, a synopsis of our non-built build programs, the um, the buy-down program. Um, just short, I need bullet points as we delve into this land use stuff more. You know, how many, how many buy downs we've done, what it costs per square foot compared to what we, we build for a square foot. I think there's some important numbers there that as we go through this, you know, I could, I can start interjecting those numbers into the conversation. Same with the uh, housing helps numbers. Yeah, so.
You know, as far as those numbers, I, I, I believe it's fifty, we've built fifteen hundred or, or caused to be built, or partnered to be built over fifteen hundred units. Isn't that right? Yeah, you know.
Yeah, it's probably very close over the last ten years.
With, with a population of what, five thousand year-round residents? So.
Kelly just told me we have seventy-one hundred units in town. And out of those twelve hundred of them are, are restricted with another nine fifty that we've committed to in the next five years. So.
I know my point is, I think we have fifteen already.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Uh, social equity.
And square in our package.
Sweet. Okay, other matters.
I've got one.
Yes, sir.
Randy Conley from Summit Youth Hockey Board will be coming in next meeting at Public Comment for three minutes. Um, the hockey programs used a ton of ice. You know, they've been looking at this capacity and and concerned about as their program grows being out of ice. They've hired Matt Stace to do a preliminary sketch on this, uh, what they call skills pads, like a half sheet of ice to try and thoughtfully design something that is affordable. Um, he's just done some general sketches. They plan, they'd like to come to a work session at the end of April to chat a little bit more. Um, I think they'd like to come to council to ask for some money for Matt to do more detailed drawings to, to then be able to put dollar signs on what, hey, what would it cost to do, you know, an outdoor skills pad with a roof on it? Um, you know, Shannon Smith had mentioned, uh, you know, if you're looking at a half sheet of ice, maybe you look at doing a full sheet. And so they'd like to ask the, the council for some money. Just wanted to prep you that they're looking to come in and get some of our time. So.
Time and money.
Well, not, not, not the big number, just money to take a harder, a deeper dive to look at it.
And I wonder before we get to that level, I'd like to understand how that fits in with all our rec programs. We have some incredible programs that serve a much larger pool than just hockey. And I'd really like to understand from staff if that is a priority, if that project goes through, how much time, effort and energy will that take? And does that align with the department's programming goals?
That's fair. Fair enough.
So the one thing I'll just suggest is that we hear from them on the eleventh. And then we can make a decision whether or not they come back for a work session or we have them work with staff.
Okay.
To come up with a plan that we then may jointly bring back to you.
Okay. Can you pass that on?
Yep.
All right. Other matters.
I think I just, I'm mulling this um, this open space conversation over. And I just like, I feel like we were in this exact same place last year with Matt and Ian. And I just really, I do want to take a hard look at the potential of incorporating more people or how can we get more great people who want to be involved? And I understand there are committees that are looking. Um, there are lots of committees that are looking, but admittedly, some are more fun than others. And I do think, I mean, you know, it always just boggles my mind that we don't have more people involved from Blue Fifty Two, or that we hear the, the, you know, people in the Wellington neighborhood don't vote. And it's just like, well, how do we reach these people? And I think we need to be realistic in that this could, this might not be the only, or this might not be the way, but it could be the way too. So I would like to have some serious consideration of, you know, that number. Or is it a different committee that's still fun and interesting and gets people out on trails? I don't know. I don't, not trying to create tons of hours of more work, but we have people who want to be involved.
Yeah.
Let's see how we can fit them in.
I'll, I'll say, yeah, and I don't disagree with that at all. But I will say this, what, I think the current BOSAC commission is, is just awesome with the diversity of skills. But what I think was a welcome addition is to get someone from this senior um demographics other than myself on there. And you know what I mean? Like it's everyone of BOSAC, you know, you, you, you know, you can crack an egg on their butts. You know, I mean, it's all, they're all like hot bodies. And then you get me and this other older, you know, other lady. Um, so, yeah, I would, I would, I think we.
Our HR is shaking her head at you right now.
We need to re, you know, I, I also think we need to represent the older, not, you know, not the avid crazy athlete, but just a regular recreationist that goes out and hikes with their friends. So.
Is a valid point. Like, if we do decide to expand, like, it should be with the intention to diversify the voices.
All right. Oh, she's so, she can, she's counting down the days starting next one.
Goggling with Malox now.
Thanks for the view.
No.
Carol, Jay? All right. Nice work, everybody.
Good government.
We are adjourned.